The mission of the Chatham Central School District is to provide students an education that nurtures intellectual curiosity and focuses on academic and cultural foundations. Our students will graduate with knowledge, problem-solving abilities, and character needed to participate ethically, adapt, succeed, and contribute in their future educational, career, and community endeavors. And I have a motion for approval of the present agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
Any votes? Are there any questions? Okay. We're going to go right into our superintendent presentation for the preschool and the universal pre-K presentation. Thank you.
Good evening. You can hear me a lot better, can't you? Can everyone hear me in the back? Okay, very good. So I am here today, actually, do you mind turning that down just a tad? I'm getting an echo in my ear. I told him to turn it up, and now I'm telling him to turn it down. Okay. Hello? Is that better? Okay, it'll have to do. So first off, I just want to thank everyone for being here. You know, budgets this time of the year are really challenging. And I can assure you that on behalf of the Chatham Central School District and the Board of Education, we've had a tough couple of months because we are at the reality that we have a deficit. And together as a community, we're having to look at every single line and try to make sure our district can be here for many years to come. And we're going to be talking a lot about that today. You know, the reality is, is that the increase in costs are catching up to every single school district in the region. And I'll talk more about that in a little bit, about how this isn't just a Chatham challenge that we have. This challenge with school budgets is all over our region. We had a superintendent meeting today. Districts all over our region are facing anywhere between $500,000 worth of a deficit to $6 million worth of a deficit. And districts are having to make really difficult decisions as we are here in Chatham. And I just want to thank our Board of Education. I want to remind everyone, these are volunteers. And I've had the pleasure of working with all of these leaders in our community, and I can tell you, each and every one of them are here for the right reasons for our students. And that's what we're going to talk about today. So on behalf of the district, I just want to thank the board for your commitment, your volunteerism, and these decisions aren't easy. This is the first time in many years Chatham has faced these challenges in our budget. We've been able to sustain without making reductions. That time has caught up to the district, and that's what today's about. I've had experiences in my past districts with reductions, and they are hard times, but I can tell you, if we work together, we'll get through it together. So I think it's a really great thing that all of you are here because we have to do this together as a community. So I'm going to start with preschool. What I've learned is there's a lot of confusion in the community about preschool. I've been in education for 23 years, most of the time as an elementary educator. I was an elementary school teacher, actually started my career in a preschool classroom, an integrated classroom at the Center for the Disability. It was a targeted classroom. And UPK is one of the most challenging pieces of public education. And the reason is, is because it's different than every other piece of education. I really wish wholeheartedly that it wouldn't be. I wish it would be treated just like our kindergarten through 12th grade program, but it's not. It's not funded properly by New York State. What New York State tried to do is they tried to come up with a way for us school districts to have pre-K, and they utilize a grant process to do that. So today, I'm going to talk to you about the different options and the different pieces of preschool throughout the year. So I want everyone to know in this room, when we're talking about pre-K, there is no bigger champion than early intervention than me. It's what it's all about. If we give our kids the support that they need young, they will need less support as they get older. So we wholeheartedly believe that. And so I know I'm able to fill two classrooms. We had conversations about pre-K thinking, we're going to have to do a lottery because what if we have three or four classrooms? Never did we think we wouldn't fill two. So that was a huge surprise to us, and that's what brings us here today. The board was not prepared for us to have to fill two. I wasn't not prepared for us to fill two. It concerns me that we didn't fill two because that means enrollment is going down in Chatham, which is another challenge. So right now, and I'll go through this, we have 32 students enrolled for UPK. Before, we had 28 when we first started the process. We've had some additional ones join us as we did the enrollment. But again, I just want to remind everyone, never did we think we wouldn't fill two. If we filled two and had 36 kids here, we wouldn't be having this conversation about pre-K today because we would have two pre-Ks. I want to make sure everyone understands that. So it was important for us to have this conversation, and all of these conversations here, because enrollment is down, and we're going to have to look at everything because of that. And that's what brings us here. So the goal of this presentation is first to educate our community on preschool in New York State, educate our community on UPK funding, and just the complexity of funding. At the end of this, I'm going to make a recommendation to the Board of Education. They're going to have a discussion, and they're likely going to make a decision today if we're going to have two UPKs. All right? So we're hoping to do that today because we don't want to hold out on this any longer. So you can go to the next slide. So the first type of preschool, this is the most popular type of preschool in New York State, we call it UPK. It stands for Universal Pre-Kindergarten. So UPK programs are designed to provide high-quality state-funded preschool education for children in the year before kindergarten, ensuring that every child has access to early learning experiences. These programs are funded by state and local governments, making it accessible to families regardless of their income. So this means that we can't target. We can't say that we're going to prioritize students with special needs, or we're going to prioritize students based on income. It has to be open to everybody. Now, it says everybody, but that doesn't mean everyone gets a spot. Because these programs are not like our K-12 programs where we have state aid back on them. We only get so much money to provide these, and then the district would have to take money out of their general account to do that. And as you're going to learn today, that general account is struggling a little bit, and we have a deficit. So it's hard to do that. And I'm going to talk about what we've done in the past. So New York State decided, because us school districts lobbied about the importance of preschool, we kept saying, you have to fund this, you have to fund this, we need preschool, we know how important it is, we know how intervention is. So what they did is they came up, rather than funding it, like we wish they did, like K-12, they came up with a grant system. This grant system is very complex, even though, and we'll talk about the different grants, some of them are competitive, some of them are not, but there's a whole application process that you have to fill out, and you often don't get your funding until later in the year. So it's really hard to plan for these programs when it's not guaranteed that you'll even get the funding for them. New York State offers grants for UPK that districts have to apply for on an annual basis, which we'll talk about. So that's UPK. Next slide. Then there's something called targeted preschool. Focuses on serving children from low-income families or those facing specific challenges aiming to provide early childhood education and support to address potential disparities and improve outcomes. New York State offered, started offering grants for this program in 1966, but stopped most of the grant funding for these programs because they're now offering UPK, more of a universal approach. So the confusion here is that Chatham did have a targeted program for several years and stopped offering this program in '23. Chatham did not receive grants for this program, but funded it from the general budget. Now, people are asking, why don't we fund it from the general budget? This was taken out of the budget, and because we have a deficit, you're going to notice the board has some difficult decisions to make, so adding things to the budget is a big challenge. You might be asking, how did kids get into this back when we offered it? All of our students were assessed who were interested in pre-K, and students who performed under the 20 percentile were put into this program. You'll see what this looked like in Chatham in a minute. Go to the next slide. Then there's something called Head Start. Chatham also had a Head Start classroom in our district. Head Start is very different than the other two. Head Start is federally funded program that promotes school readiness for children from low-income families, offering comprehensive services to support early learning, health, and family well-being for children from birth to age five. So there is a Head Start program, and that provides support to families in general that are low-income families, but then they also have a preschool that focuses on that as well. Head Start programs are run by local nonprofit organizations and community action agencies. You'll notice they're not typically run by school districts. In the past, Chatham rented space to a Head Start program. The students placed in the program lived in districts throughout Columbia County and the agency placed these students. So in the past, Chatham rented a classroom to a targeted program. That had nothing to do with our district. We truly just rented the space. In those classrooms, there were students from all over the county. All right? So if we opened a program, we can't just say only Chatham kids come. It has to be open to students based on that as well. And we have absolutely no say over who teaches it, what the curriculum is, what it is that they do. It's completely separate than the other programs. So those are the three options that we have in kindergarten, in pre-K. I wish, if I had a magic wand, I would say, get rid of all those and just make it like K-12, but the state is not willing to do that. That would mean they would have to fund us more and give us more state aid. And it doesn't look like they're willing to do that. So you can go to the next one. Here's a history of, just since 2018 to 2019, of pre-K in Chatham. So in 1819, there was one targeted classroom of 14 kids. Remember, I said that was based upon under the 20th percentile and one Head Start classroom. Okay? That targeted classroom was fully funded by the district, and the district took that out of their general fund. They were able to do that back in 2018. They were able to budget for that. Right now, we are struggling with those funds, so adding something like that would be a huge challenge to the district. That means, though, 14 of our students out of about 80 students in that grade are the only ones that had preschool in our district. The rest of the families, if they wanted to go to preschool, they would have to find it outside of the district and likely have to pay. Right? So if you go down, you'll see that all the way until '23-'24, that's how it was. There was a targeted program and a Head Start program. Again, the Head Start was completely county-based, was provided by an agency, not part of the district. In '23-'24, that is when the district, for the first time, applied for UPK funding. So we'll talk about the funding structures for UPK, but at that time, they were able to have three UPK classrooms of 43 students. The reason they were able to do that is because we applied for two grants internally. We applied for a, what do we call it here, a competitive and a non-competitive grant, which we got for both. And you'll notice the numbers were small in those classes that year. That was done purposely because that was really kind of still that COVID push there. So they wanted the class sizes smaller, and then any excess money that the district needed to pay came out of COVID funding. So we paid the rest of that through COVID funding, so it was not through the general budget. So the district did not fund pre-K. It was by the three different grants that we received at that time. As we all know, COVID is behind us, and those funds are no longer in existence. So that's not an option to pull from COVID funding. So that's why we had three UPK classrooms that year. We were very fortunate. This year, current year, we have two UPK classrooms with 36 children in each of them. So that's the history of preschool in Chatham for the last couple of years. Next slide. UPK funding. So UPK is unmandated, and districts can't receive any state aid for preschool. So unmandated means districts do not have to provide it. Most districts do not. I can tell you, for example, I have a, I live in a district, there's about 300 in my children's class. They offer two UPK classrooms for the whole district. You have to go to a lottery, and I have three children, and none of them ever got into the program. So, you know, so that's just an example, and that's the typical example around most districts. They might have one or two or three classrooms, but it's not provided for all students. So that is the norm, unfortunately, in New York State. If you go to any administration team, teacher team, they would say, we need more pre-K, but we need more funding in order to do that. And I just want to reiterate, the funding structure is very different from the K-12 program. Just to let everyone know, I'm trying to educate everyone, preschool is so different that if you had a speech teacher pushing into a preschool classroom, that provider is actually paid for through the county. So any sort of supports under the age of kindergarten, the districts do not pay, the county pays for that fee. What we have been doing in Chatham, because there's such a waiting list to get pre-K providers in the county, we've been utilizing our staff and getting reimbursed from the county for some of those services in our pre-K room. But that's how different pre-K is. Even if you have support in it, it's paid for by the county, not the district. It's a completely different funding structure. I don't know why. That's just how it was designed in New York State. So that's what makes it so complex when it comes to pre-K funding, because it is, always has been, not provided by the district, other than the grants. So there are two different types of New York State UPK grants offered right now. There's a grant called non-competitive and competitive. Non-competitive, our district has $108,000 for a non-competitive grant. That means, even if we had five classes, we would still only get $108,000, which, again, isn't fair. So that's for a total of 20 students, which I'll talk about in a minute. Then there's a competitive grant. That is one that you have to apply for and cross your fingers and hope you get it. Chatham is very fortunate, we got the competitive grant. My old district did not get the competitive grant. So that's why we were able to really fund these without really asking a lot of questions because we got these two grants, which I'm going to explain how all that money comes together. The other really tricky part is it's paid out by student. So if you only have, and that's where our issue is, if you only have 12 kids in the class, you're only getting paid for 12 of those students at $5,400 per student for the non-competitive grant. And you'll see on the next page, it's $10,000 for the competitive grant. So the reason we're having this conversation is because we were unable to fill both our classrooms of 18 students each. So we have, there's more money that we would have to cover in order to have our two classrooms like we were hoping to have. Go to the next page. So like I said, the competitive grant is really great. It's $10,000 per student for a total of 20 students total. So that's, we're fortunate that we got that, and we're hoping that we're going to continue to get it. There's no guarantee we're going to get it next year. We have to apply again, go through a whole process, and they could deny us, right? But we have to take that risk, and we're willing to take that chance for our community. Even if we don't get it, we're going to commit to that, at least having one classroom we committed to. We're going to talk about, can we commit to two classrooms? And I'm going to tell the board what that would look like in our budget. So right now, we are committed to two, even if we don't get that grant. Again, I asked New York State, how do you expect us to plan when we are applying for grants and not sure we're going to get them? Right? Because we could find out in September. You applied, you didn't get the grant, you're on the hook, right? And you might be asking, what are the expenses for pre-K? It's staffing, right? It's for one teacher, one TA, their salary and their benefits. We're fortunate, we have the supplies and the equipment for two classrooms. We would have to do, of course, yearly supplies, but those numbers are minimal. So more food for thought here. UPK classrooms, there's a lot of laws on UPK classrooms, right? It's not like our K program. So there's New York State regulations. So a UPK classroom can have 18 students in it with one teacher and one TA. UPK classrooms could have 20 students if you have one teacher and two TAs. For two students, it's not cost-effective for us to add another TA just to get two more students in that room. So the district is committed to having class sizes of 18 with one teacher and one TA. Another thing that makes pre-K much different, the regulations are much more specific for our pre-K classrooms, which makes sense because we're talking three- and four-year-olds. So the other really, just to make it even crazier, when it comes to these UPK grants, you have to look for a community partner in order to get the grant. What that means is we have to reach out to all of our community partners. That means your certified, New York State certified childcare centers, your pre-K centers, and you have to partner with them and share the funds. You know, that little money we get, we have to share that funding, which is incredibly complex. So if a daycare provider wanted to work with us, we would have to have them work with us and share all of the costs, share all the expenses, and make a plan on how we would share everything. I don't want to say we're fortunate, but we were unable to find a partner that was certified. And they have to be interested, and they have to be willing partners, and you have to make a plan. Every year, we have to do a search for partners in our community, and that would put a snafu on the current program we have. It would look different if we had a partner. And, you know, I hate to say, I hope we don't find a partner, but it's a lot easier if you don't find a partner because you can do it all yourself. But that's another requirement of this UPK grant. They want it to be a community partnership. And that would take funding away from the districts, and even, there could even be something where the partner could come in and say, all right, we'll do this with you, but it has to be our teacher, it can't be your teacher. And that's where it gets really, really tricky. But right now, we don't have a partner, and right now, we do it fully ourselves. So we have to fill out a waiver every year if we don't have a partner, showing that we tried and showing why we don't have a partner, just to make UPK even more complex for everybody. All right, you can turn the next page. So these are our costs. So this is this year. This year, we have a total of two classrooms with two teachers and two teacher assistants and 36 students. So our classrooms are maxed out. The cost of our current program is $288, $288,500. That includes salaries for our teachers, our aides, benefits, and everything else, you know, for that. The UPK grants paid for $286,400 worth of these costs. So the district only had to pay about $2,000 out of the general fund in order to have that program. So you can see that this, most of this fund did not come out of our budget. That's why we're having this conversation, because more money than we were expecting is going to have to come out of our budget to have two classrooms. And the board is doing the right thing. They are the financial stewards of the district. They can't, we can't just say we're going to have two classrooms without this conversation. The board's doing their job, and I appreciate them for doing that. Next page. So '25-'26. So there's two scenarios here. Scenario one, which is why we're able to do this without much of a conversation. So one classroom of 18 students is a total estimate of about $150,250. Being that we are expecting to get our competitive grant, the competitive grant will pay for the entire program for one classroom, and there's no cost to the district. So even during tough budget times, this is, you know, non-debatable because we're going to get grants for this, there's no cost to our budget, which is great. So that is with one classroom. Now let's go what it looks like for two classrooms. This is where it gets tricky. So we decided as a district, as long as we get 36 students, we're going to have two classrooms. Next page. So as long as we have, as long as we have two, as long as we were able to fill the classrooms with 36 students for total, we were going to commit to having a second UPK classroom. We were surprised and shocked when we couldn't even get 36 kids for this program. So what that means is, what that would cost, what the cost would be, two classrooms with 32 students, and don't forget, even though we only have 32 students, the cost is still the same because we still have to pay the teachers' full-time rates and the TA's full-time rates. So our expenses are always going to be the same, no matter how many kids are in the room. So competitive grant pays out $10,000 times 20, which is $200,000 right from the competitive grant. We're very fortunate to get that. I just want to reiterate to the board, there's never a guarantee we're going to get that money. If we don't get that money, we'll be letting you know that we'll have to take out of the general fund for that, out of our fund balance, if we don't get that. So I'll be keeping you updated. I'm hoping and praying we get those funds. I did find out the funds are not federal. As we know, there's a lot of question on federal funding. They are state, so there's a good chance that we will get it. And we were told by the competitive grant that if you've received it once, you have a better chance of receiving it again. New districts that are applying for it typically don't receive it because, and they continue with their current partners. Could that change? It sure could. So there's no guarantee. This is why we have to have this conversation every year, because the funding is so unpredictable. Okay. The non-competitive grant, which is not competitive, we're typically guaranteed it, you get $5,400 times 12 students for a total of $64,800. Now, if we had, if we had 16 students, you would multiply $5,400 times four, and that would be a larger amount. That would be more like $97,000, if I do my math right, if we were able to get four more students. So as you can see, for every student, it's, every student you don't have in the class, it's 5,500 hours less. So the total grant received for having two UPK classrooms at this moment of having 32 students, because that's what we have, is a total of $264,800. In order to fund with our current numbers, the district would have to come up with $35,700 in order to have a second classroom. We'll talk more about that. So a lot of questions. Why do we have a lottery in March? You know, there's a lot of reasons why you want to have a lottery earlier than later. Number one, out of respect to our families. It's really, really important that families understand that every year, UPK is not going to be a guarantee. It's going to have to be a discussion from the board and a decision on all the different scenarios, how many people we have enrolled. What I would say, if somebody is interested in the UPK program, register right away. Registration next year will open on January 1st or January 2nd, and we are going to be asking our families to register right away because we need to have a good understanding of how much, how many students we have, so we know how much money we can get in these grant process. So we wanted to do it early because we wanted our families, if there wasn't going to be enough room for them, we wanted them to know so they can plan ahead. The worst thing you could do is do a lottery in, you know, end of April, May, or June because by that point, if they want a program for their child, all the programs are probably filled. And as our families are probably learning, there's hardly any private programs in Columbia County. That's a real struggle for families, and that's why we're having this discussion today. So let's see. The other reason is, we have to plan a budget. So it's important, as you know, we're in March, and we're already going to be introducing a budget to everyone today. So if we didn't have this information till April, we would have a really hard time planning a budget because we need to make these decisions before you adopt the budget at the beginning of April. So it's always going to be my recommendation to hold a lottery in March to make sure that people have plenty of notice so we can plan ahead. But there should always be a conversation like this every year. Let's see. So New York State, when you apply for these grants, they make you write out your lottery process. So in order to even start the process for grant, we have to say what the lottery is going to be. I don't know any districts in New York State that don't have a lottery process for UPK because I don't know any districts that can, some urban districts can, but, because they get additional grants, but I don't know of any districts that can give every single student that wants it preschool in their district. This is a very common dilemma that all of us are having, and that's why as a superintendent, I advocate for the state for a change in funding. Since there's not enough students, not enough funding for all students to attend UPK, districts have to utilize a lottery system. So it's recommended to hold a lottery in late winter so families have notice in case they don't get in. And like I said at the beginning, never did we think we wouldn't be able to fill two classes. That was kind of in our eyes a given. But I need the community to understand, say if we had more than 36 students, the likelihood of the district now, without the COVID funding, to have a third preschool classroom would be very unlikely because it would be very costly, and our grants that we get would not be enough funding for three classrooms. It would be very expensive to have three or four preschool classes because the third and fourth one would be pretty much completely covered by the budget. If the board wants to do that and budget for that, they can, but no, we don't get aid back on it. So my recommendation to families is register early. Okay. So after saying that, we're going to give the board a couple of options, and then I'm going to give my recommendation. Option one is you commit to one UPK classroom, as you already have, and you wait to see if we get additional students to enroll so that we can maximize our entire grant allocations. We would need four more students to do that. And just so the board understands, even if we get four more students, the district still has to budget for $14,100 to fully fund two classrooms. So there's still going to be a portion that we would still have to fund, but we already agreed through discussions that the board would be willing to do that. That's why we really were hoping for two. Option number two is we commit to two UPK classrooms based on current enrollment of 32 students. The district will apply for both grants and maximize the grant's potential by students enrolled. So don't forget, no matter what, we're going to have to do $14,100 to have two classrooms. By us having four less students, the district would then have to come up with an additional $21,600 for a total of $35,700 out of the budget. Now, we already have a deficit. My recommendation wouldn't be to cut or reduce anything else. My recommendation would be utilize the unallocated fund balance for that extra fee. Just so everyone knows, if the district opens up a second UPK classroom, that would allow us to keep one teacher and one TA from being laid off next school year. All right? So not only for $35,700, would you be giving a group of at least 14 students a preschool program, you would also be preserving two jobs in the district. So those are the options. Now, I'm going to give my recommendation. As I said at the beginning, there's no, no bigger champion for early intervention than me, so I bet you can probably guess which one I'm going to choose. So I would recommend option two. I would recommend $35,700 to allow at least 14 to 18 more students a program, I think is worth the cost. I think, you know, we have, the district, we're going to talk more about this, but the district is very fortunate to have unreserved fund balance and to have reserves. The district has done a tremendous job, tremendous job, saving money through good days. I could tell you, talking to several districts that do not have that luxury of having a fund balance or reserves, we're in much better shape here in Chatham. And because of that, we will be able to sustain our district for many, many years to come, because you, as a district, decided during good times, without having reductions, to be able to, to save that money. So being that we have that money saved, this would be a great example to use it. So I recommend to the board that we use option two, and that we take $35,700 additional out of the, the fund balance.
So I do support option number two, number one, but I was just also wondering, did you do any research to, do we still have the, like, the summer programs for kindergarten, for between, like kindergarten and first, and between first and second? I think we, do we have the summer programs? And like, is there any correlation?
So, so when we get to the reductions, we are not reducing any summer programs. So whatever the district had last year is what we'll continue to have. So Kristin, is that something that was had last year?
Last year, we did a, like, one evening summer school for students who needed head support for the summer, that was based on teacher representation. And prior to that, we have had some school for students in whole grades.
Oh, just various, okay. Because I was just wondering, basically, if there is a correlation between, like, the more kids that we can get into UPK, the less support system, like, they'd be more prepared for kindergarten, so that would actually lessen our need to spend money on supports further down the line, that would then?
Sure. I, I could tell you through national research, that's exactly what happens with, with preschool. When a child, when a child, especially a child that struggles, if they don't have a preschool education, they are really behind in kindergarten and continually behind for many years to come, especially those kids that struggle. So I would say, I don't have the, you know, the research for Chatham, but it definitely, it definitely will correlate. Yeah, most definitely, especially those kids that, that struggle academically. Any other questions?
Would you tell me one more time, when does the request for the grant have to end?
You would think it would be early, wouldn't you? So that, you would think it would be early, but the grant doesn't even open up until the summertime. So the grant doesn't even open up until the summertime, you can't even apply for it. So, so we won't know if we get the grant probably until September? It's really, and it doesn't make any sense. So how do you, how are you supposed to plan ahead when you're not even sure if you're going to get these grants? But it's a risk that you have to, that you have to take as a district.
Is, is there still a Head Start program in Columbia County? Or once we stopped renting, does that disappear?
No, there is. They're in Hudson, mostly Hudson.
Could you remind us, Andrew, how we put out information to families that there is the sign up for the pre-K?
Sure, yeah. So a mailing, a mailing went home to every resident. In our, every, every February, we send a mailing home, and on the back of the mailing, it has a section for preschool registration and also kindergarten registration. So a mailing went home to every community member that pays taxes in Chatham, so that's number one. It's also on our website, it's also on Facebook, it's also on social media, it's also on our signs. We also put an ad in the news, local newspapers for it as well. So we really advertise as much as we can. A lot of people didn't realize it was in the flyer, in the mailer, or should a lot of people don't read the mailer, even though we spent a lot of money on it? But it was in there, so, you know, a mailing did go home to everyone, too. And the registration is still open, you know, and that, and that was always, always communicated that, you know, the, it doesn't close, but we had to come up with a date, so we could
We're going to have a separate comment, right? No, I, I do have one question first, but I would keep the comment separate. How was the, the funding for the targeted pre-K accounted for in the budget? Was that, did that come out of a general fund each year? Was it special end, special ed funding? Was that, was it encumbered? Like, how did that work?
That was in the general fund. So we had, we had one teacher, one teacher assistant. And as, as Andrew stated, we had one class and, you know, 14, 15 kids, and the rest of, you know, population wouldn't be able to get in a class. But, um, then when we went to the UPK with the three classes, that's when we went to total UPK. Thank you.
Sorry, just one other question. So just to be clear, we can have UPK, but we can't also have targeted at the same time? And can we have UPK and rent to Head Start, too? Or, so we could do those two, but we can't?
Yeah, you could still do a targeted, too. You could. You would have to totally fund that separately, and you would, you would have to keep it totally separate than the UPK grant.
Oh, so you can't co-mingle the money on sharing?
No.
Okay.
UPK has so many rules, and we actually, Kristin and Terry can tell you how complicated it is. Someone from the state came in and audited our programs, and it's wild what you have to do to have a pre-K program in your district. It's quite wild. It's not easy, and that's UPK, though. If we totally self-funded, and we didn't use any of the grants, you can, there's no one coming in to check your program, there's nothing to fill out, you can just do that. But it would be, as, as we said, it would be, how much would it cost the district? Yeah, yeah. Quite a bit of money. You need the money, and that's why we have to do it. And you don't get aid back on it, you know, so you can't, and you would have to, in the, when you're balancing the budget out, you have to make sure you're, you're using taxpayer dollar rather than any state aid on it, which, again, doesn't make any sense.
Okay, so my question to the board is, have you received enough information to have a roundtable consensus, or do you think?
Now, the board doesn't have to vote on it, because you're not voting on the budget.
You don't really have the time for the vote.
Yeah, you're not voting, but you could give a consensus, so we know that we can plan ahead for two pre-K classes.
So what say you?
I, I just have some comments I want to bring up. First of all, we didn't, we didn't go, you could go very deeply into the subject, but I think it's worth pointing out that the, the Head Start model has a number of limitations. You brought up the fact that it could be any of the children that qualify in the general region, right? The, the larger challenge is, it's very, very difficult for our community members to get children into Head Start. There's waiting lists, there's a number of qualifications. In addition to that, there's tons of evidence that a effectively-run pre-K program has a number of positive outcomes, but we actually don't have the ability to do many of those things in a Head Start program, such as make sure we do push-in intervention screening. And that's, that pays a lot of dividends. So that's, that's the second thing I want to talk about, which is, the, the little bit of research I've done on this subject, and, you know, the very simple modeling I've done, is that even if we had to pay for the entire classroom out of pocket without grant funding, the evidence shows that if we implement best practices, we can look forward to a savings over the course of the K through 12 on the student population that go through those classrooms. The, the, the outcome is, it's hard to understate the potential there to divert people away from IEPs and 504s that they could end up in for 12 years, and still not have a great outcome, when an early intervention, that extra year in the beginning, can really lead to a situation where they get diverted away from special ed entirely. The, if, if we do our job right in, in pre-K, that program should pay for itself. When we get grant funding from the state, that's, that's great. We get the money back. That's, that's wonderful. Even if we weren't able to do that, I still think it would be justified, and in the way I model it, if we can fill half a classroom, it would be worth it. It does, you know, we, we, as we look forward the next couple of years, it's possible we do go into a territory where we can't even fill that half a classroom. And I don't, I don't know how I can continue to justify it then, if we can't get the grants, but this year, for the foreseeable future, if we can keep those numbers up at nine, eight, nine, 10, I think it would be both immoral and unethical to deny those funds, even if it puts a, puts really a significant pressure on general fund, which is, we're in, we're in a difficult place right now. But unfortunately, the other side of this equation is, we're going to have to be talking about a lot of other programs. And while there's data that backs this one in the educational outcome, that is not true of everything we do here in Chatham. So that's, that's my comment on this one.
Any other board members looking for a consensus for a second classroom with a maximum? It would be a maximum of 36 seats. We have to keep that in mind, that this is what we're talking about.
So for this year, I would be in consensus to support that. I agree, I think the long-term savings actually are there, even if we don't have the local data immediately available to us. I feel informed enough at this point to vote for option two, I guess, or to agree with option two.
I agree as well, to support option two. I believe it's important.
Agreed.
Hi. It was a wonderful presentation. Thank you very much. And I certainly agree that we should go ahead with the second classroom.
I also fully support option number two.
Okay. All of our board members are in agreement. Go ahead, Andrew. We're going to go to the second classroom.
So we will start planning for a second UPK classroom. Awesome. Thank you, guys.
Thank you for that presentation.
No, my pleasure. And I, and I just want to say to the community, I, I had the privilege of meeting with several preschool families, and, you know, they were just, they were delightful, truly. And I told them that, you know, come to the meeting, advocate, that's what, that's what these board meetings are for, you know, this is the process at work. So, you know, and the board just needs time to make these decisions, right? So it's important to advocate for what you believe in, and that's why we have board meetings. So thank you for coming, and thank you for all the letters that I received from community members, and I know the board received letters, and that helps, that helps me, because we need to know what's important to the community. We all knew already, UPK was one of those things.
And that is why we include public comment in our, our board agendas, because it is important to get feedback from the community to work together, because that's the only way we're going to solve some of these problems, which means, so we're finished with our superintendent presentation, we're going to move into public comment. Does anyone have anything they'd like to say? You're not public.
Mr. Smith, could you say your name?
Hi, my name is Roger. I came here with all kinds of papers for you to hear. Now I don't need to do hardly any of them, and I thank you very much. It's a real important to have pre-K, just like you said. It'll pay for itself. You can ask Ms. Mason with my granddaughter, she'd been doing a great job, and it starts with pre-K. It doesn't start with kindergarten. And if we didn't have a pre-GAY, all the troubles in pre-GAY would be put on kindergarten, and all their problems would go to first, and it, it just, it doesn't stop. You gotta, you know, so I think you made a right decision, and I thank you very much.
Okay, I will keep this very short and sweet. I appreciate the decision you made. I was here tonight as, yes, as we all know, I was on the board for many, many years. But before that, I taught in this district for 35 years in grades K to 2. And the importance of early childhood education is paramount for these young kids. My grandson, who's in pre-K in East Greenbush this year, never went in to a grocery store before he was two years old, because that was what happened to these kids as they were coming through. And the kids coming in this year are pretty much in the same spot. They were the kids that were the most affected by the pandemic. And, you know, after that, my youngest, who we have now, he, we take him everywhere we go. But as much as he, we could take him in public, because he doesn't sit still. But other than that, you know, he's able to go out in the public, where with Grayson, everything was very, very protected because of the pandemic. And so I thank you very much for listening, you know. I don't have to go on now about why I feel this. I just thank you.
Thank you, Beth. All right, that's, no one else wants to speak? Okay, we'll move. Okay, we will move on to board member comments. All right, Matt, go ahead.
The gain is up really high today, guys. I am just, like, really so thankful to have this stakeholder support here today. Can you, can you guys hear me okay? I'll just speak loud. I'm, I am super thankful that we have all the stakeholder support today, and in general. I, I think that there are times during the year where we're actually making really important decisions, and sometimes we're begging for community opinions, and, and we don't get any. And I, I think it's a really important part of this process, and so thank you, everyone, for coming out, and it's, it's actually, it means a lot to see people that care about specific, specific things. That's why we're here as board members, is try to represent stakeholder interest, but no one comes in the meetings. You know, we get led in circles sometimes, I'm going to tell you. So, so thank you for coming out.
Matt, I was going to say something very similar about that. We do need the feedback, and we do appreciate it, especially when we're coming up against these really difficult decisions. And this was a perfect example of, we have to talk about these things, because as a board, we represent everyone. The taxpayer that is on, you know, a limited income, you know, a fixed income, we have to represent that person, too, for every decision we make, for every dollar that we spend, we are beholden to that person. We're beholden to the teacher that walks in and said, I have this great program I want to give to my students, because I feel that this is going to benefit. We are beholden to that teacher as well. We're beholden to the parents. So we have to think about the big picture, as well as our staff, and making sure that our school is safe and running properly. There are so many facets. Every single dollar that we decide to spend has to be taken from something else. There is a sacrifice attached to every dollar that we spend. So we have to look at the big picture, and it's uncomfortable a lot of times, because we're community members, too, and this is our community. And that's the challenge of being a board member, is because we care immensely, we would write those checks if we could, we would give everything we possibly could, but we have to be prudent with it, because we are taking away from something else every single time. So we have to balance that, what we are taking away from, what is actually the higher priority in this particular instance? We will always, I, you guys must know that, it was only a few years ago, I was sitting at that desk, I was the one complaining, and I'm 0 for 3, by the way, on what I wanted, but somehow or another, I ended up here, which I think is ludicrous, I never expected to be a board president. But I wanted to know, the two reasons I joined the board, because I wanted to understand I didn't understand. And two, I wanted to be a bridge, to give information to the people, what I learned, I wanted to give back to my community and let them understand, hey, there is no grand conspiracy behind those walls. There is no, hey, they're out to get you, and they don't want to give you what you want. It really is really decent people that welcomed me with open arms, even after I was shouting at them at that microphone. You two specifically were very kind and warm to me. You're the only ones left from that era. We just have a genuinely wonderful group here. I'm so excited about Andrew and Terry joining us. I mean, they're wonderful. And Mike, I have a new appreciation for your knowledge. I mean, without you, we'd be so lost with understanding the, the financial intricacies. I mean, without you, we'd be so lost with understanding the financial intricacies. So I just wanted to explain that I always want to be this bridge to let everybody understand that we really care. We are community members. We would love to give you everything that we, you know, possibly want, just write the check. We would love to do that. But we have to be prudent, because we know that it is taking away from something or someone else. So just talk to us. We want the feedback. This was a wonderful example. We got the feedback. Everybody was like, okay, we understand, but we still feel this is important. And then we pulled the information together. We came to a good decision. And I hope to be able to do this going forward, because I believe this is going to be the easiest hard decision we're going to have to make in the next couple of years. I look at the the numbers, and our numbers are dropping off. I mean, and it's significant, like in three years, the numbers really drop, and the state's going to look at us, and our taxpayers are going to be shouting at us, why are we spending so much money when we don't have hardly any kids? As soon as we come up with a budget, we know there's going to be somebody on a fixed income in here yelling at us about what we're trying to pull off. So a little bit of grace for everyone. And we'll figure this out together as a community. I mean, if you have a big city, you can be anonymous, not here. We're all connected, and we need to try to work together, and we're just all going to just do our absolute best, and that's my promise.
I got one more thing, just because there's so many stakeholders here in the room. We really need you guys to show up and vote. So thank you for coming out here. The budget votes are really important. And we need this stakeholder group to participate. Yeah, it's coming up, May 20th. Sorry.
Okay, everybody's finished? All right, so Sasha, our student representative.
All right. So first, I'm going to start, because Ms. Fisher is at robotics practice right now. So she's going to be here, so I'm going to read something that she asked me to read. So the high school robotics team finished well at the Finger Lake Regional two weeks ago. They ranked 15 out of 55 teams and made it to playoffs. And the last time they made it to playoffs was in 2018. During the last two weeks between competitions, they have been making modifications to the code for a more extensive autonomous period and tweaking some of the design structures to make the robot more reliable. They are very excited for this competition. They think they have a solid chance of being in the top eight going into playoffs. Ms. Fisher implores you to make the effort to come see them at the MVP Arena sometime between Thursday and Saturday. These kids and mentors have collectively put in thousands of hours of work over the last three months, some weeks averaging more than 40 hours. You can't get the full scope and appreciation for the event by watching online. Seeing the scale and the energy in person is awe inspiring, and you will understand why these mentors and kids have such passion for this program. All that being said, you should also come this weekend, because there's a real possibility that this will be the last year for this program. She will email the schedule for the days to Mr. Core and will update with the daily schedule of matches. The link to view the live stream is in the same as on the flyer that you got at the last meeting. Okay. And then now I want to talk about Greece. That was last weekend. I think a lot of you got the chance to go. But it was an amazing turnout. We had over 1,300 people over the three nights, which broke our previous record from Mamma Mia, which was two years ago. And overall, it was an amazing performance for all the actors, and the audience really made it, and it made all the actors so incredibly happy to have so much support. And then also during that, there was a pop-up art show. And it was created by all the art classes, actually in the hallway right now. I highly encourage you all to take a look at that. So right now, we have a lot of art classes, including studio art, drawing and painting, media art, printmaking, and sculpture making, actually. Those were all made by the sculpture making class recently. And but now that Greece is over, and after this meeting, that will be in the cafeteria for people to continue enjoying. And then this Monday, or this, yeah, yesterday, the Ascend ran the district's professional development meeting. Thank you to Lion and Sam for being in that. I think actually, most of you were there. But we talked about student engagement. So we did a slideshow, and we shared examples from our experiences. And I thought it went really well. We got a lot of good feedback. And I also want to thank, I know some board members went, and that meant a lot to us. Spring sports have started, games and practices are going. We have two field trips coming up tomorrow. The sculpture class is going to Mass Moka, which we went to last year as well, and it was super fun, and everyone enjoyed it. And then on Thursday, Student Government is going to their third Questar Leadership Workshop, which I know I talked to you guys about last time. But for the next meeting, I will give a report on what that was like again. And then for New Visions, their capstone projects are being shown this Friday at the University of Albany. And then the GSA, the Gay Straight Alliance Club, is stuffing 300 Easter eggs with candy and giving them to students in the cafeteria, again, similar to what we did on Valentine's Day. And that will happen on April 10th, and a lot of NHS members come and help with that. And then for Capstone, it's going, and we just completed our drafts for our extended outlines, which is a big step. And the final outlines are due on April 4th, so it's all coming up very fast. There's a lot of interesting topics for Capstone right now, including adoption versus breeding, family separation at borders, hunting, benefits in music, and social media. So there's a lot going on right now, but it's a fun time of the year.
Thank you, Sasha. When when are the Capstone presentations?
May 16th.
16th, okay. Hey, I didn't know that New Visions did a capstone as well.
Yeah, Mr. Reed was telling me about that. I don't know a ton about it, but I know since they are excused from the one Chatham does, it's like they do their own version of it.
So it's it's not the Chatham version? They're doing their own project? Like, for example, I'm going to see one on Friday. But it's very, it's different than the one Chatham does.
So it's not a dry run for those students that's...
No, no, this is a project specifically based on their course that they're taking at Questar.
All right, Andrew, right back at you. Updates from our superintendent.
Okay. So as I mentioned a little bit in the pre-K update, Mike and I spent the morning today at Questar. We met about 10 superintendents and business officials. And it was a tough conversation, because everyone in that room had a very large deficit that we're looking to do. So the goal of us coming together is how can we work together as districts that are struggling financially to share possibly services down the road? Really good conversations, really interesting. And I can tell you that each district there is planning to go to the max allowable tax levy, some are actually going above. Each district is is making budget reductions of staff and faculty. A lot of the districts are in similar boat as we are, utilizing enrollment numbers to do that, because this is a trend throughout Columbia, Rensselaer, and Greene Counties that our enrollment is going down. So a lot of, a lot of the districts are looking at those numbers, and that's how the reductions are being made, similar to that what we're having to do too. The biggest difference, as I mentioned, some districts don't have enough fund balance or reserve. So I just wanted to talk a little bit about reserves and fund balance. There's a lot of confusion out there on it. So how it works is if you utilize money to balance a budget out of reserves or fund balance, you're, you're, it's only a Band-Aid for one year, right? It's only going to help you that one year. If you use it one year, then you have to use it again next year. So for the example, if the district took $100,000 out this year to use fund balance, then they have to use that $100,000 next year, and then whatever else they need to use for their deficit that year as well. We are not seeing, with all the increase in costs, we're not seeing that this is going to be a one-year thing here in Chatham. So this is going to be a conversation. So when we're using reserves, and and Mike will talk more about this, and fund balance, we have to make a, be very strategic, so we can use it for multiple years. So it's not as easy as saying, all right, we're going to use $1 million out of it, because guess what? You have to use $1 million next year, and then anything else on top of that. If you utilize our fund balance and reserves quickly, we will not, that that money will be gone in a couple of years, and that will not be sustainability for the district. So I just want to make sure people understand that it's not as easy as using your fund balance and reserves for one time, because that is a multiple year approach. A lot of districts have been using their fund balance and reserves for many years already, and they're at the end of their of their reserves. So what that means is they have nothing else to take from. We don't want to get in that boat. So we have to make sure we do it strategically. And I just have to say, Mike, you know, I know you get a lot of, a lot of slack for your, for the fund balance and reserves, but he's, he did a great job of preparing the district for these tough times. Without that, we would be in a much different position today. So, you know, and this is somebody coming new to the district. We're very fortunate to be able to have some funds that we can utilize for many years to balance our budget, and so we don't have to make incredible cuts that are going to impact student program. So I just wanted to make sure everyone under, Mike is going to talk a lot more about that. But so that's all I have to say about that. So we came up with some great ideas. We're going to continue this collaboration. But I just want our board to know that you're not the only ones making these difficult decisions. Every board of education, you know, is. I could tell you, you know, Ichabod has a $3 million deficit. I could tell you New Lebanon has a 2.1 million deficit. Berlin has a 2.7 million deficit. And some of those districts don't have anything else to take. So it's really tough. It's really tough. I could tell you my home district of Bethlehem has a $6 million deficit. So everyone is having these really complicated discussions, and they're laying off, and they are, and it's because of the increase in costs. Mike is going to talk more about this. We just found out that our insurance costs are going up 15% in one year. 15%. That is, how do you sustain that? And if that's one year, 15%, that's close to $800,000 of an increase, just in our health insurance. And that's not just Chatham, that's everybody. That's everybody, health insurance. And and just for perspective, I'll just, our prescription's going up over 12%. So, yeah, not good. And this is, this is tough, and this isn't just Chatham, this is all, this is all districts around. So it's, it's really tough. It's really tough. So that's what brings us here today. Hate to be the bearer of bad news, but we, again, transparency is what it's all about. And Mike will talk, I didn't need to jump that in, Mike, I know you. The other thing I wanted to talk about, let's go to a more positive note. As we all know, Brian Simons is retiring at the end of this year. Brian, thank you for your, your commitment to the district. She chose, she chose a really great, let's give Brian a round of applause. I truly have never seen a special ed director so engaged with kids. You know, what you do and the relationships that you build with families and kids is, I've never seen anything like it. And that's a testament to you, you'll be really, really hard, you know, huge loss for the district. So thank you. And we'll, we'll celebrate you later on in the year, but well, I just wanted to bring that up. So the reason I'm bringing this up is because we are very fortunate in the district to welcome a new special ed director, Stephanie Carbone. Stephanie, can you just raise, do you want to just stand up and say hi? So today, we are approving Stephanie. Stephanie's go, we're very, very fortunate, because she's going to have the ability to to shadow Brian. And the goal of that time is to start building those relationships with kids and families, because that's what we're looking for in Chatham. So she'll have several weeks to do that before he retires. So welcome, Stephanie. Stephanie comes to us through Questar. I know. We don't see a pattern here or anything, do we? I'm on the list with Questar, let me tell you.
They owe us, they owe us, I think.
Yeah, they took a couple people, I heard, in the past, right? So Stephanie is is renowned around the region. She works in school districts all over Greene, Columbia, and Rensselaer County. The relationships she has are unbelievable. She's been the model school specialist at Questar, where she has brought technology into the classroom to really support, you know, struggling students. And she comes with a ton of special ed experience, because she was a speech pathologist and also a CSE director for, I think, close to 20 years, right, Stephanie? So she actually was a CSE chair, so she has a lot of experience in that. So she comes with a ton of experience. We are incredibly fortunate to have her here in Chatham, and she's going to do great things for this district. So Stephanie, welcome, welcome. And the board will approve you soon, so congratulations. Stephanie, I don't want to put you on the spot, but do you want to say anything? I didn't even tell you that. Do you want to just say? Okay. I know she's not shy, so come, come on up to the, if you don't mind. I know, I should have told you.
Yeah, these, these meetings are recorded.
We don't usually have this big of a crowd.
Well, hello, everyone. It is truly an honor to join this team. I have big shoes to fill, and I look forward to having that time to be mentored by you and to meet everyone within the district and all of the students. I've heard such wonderful things, and I'm so excited to be part of this team. And I look forward to starting on May 1st. Thank you. It's an honor. Thank you.
And I also just wanted to thank Ascend and three of our Ascend students for coming. They gave me goosebumps the past couple of days. You know, what what better professional development can we get from the hearing from the students themselves? And they did that completely on their own. They presented to a couple hundred teachers, right? Couple hundred teachers and TAs and staff. And I was just so proud of of them. And all of those words were from them. We have, you know, the, just looking at these leaders that we have in our students, you know, the future is bright. I thank you for the three of you that are here, and you did an amazing job. And it's what it's all about, you know? Having kids do it is what it's all about.
I second that, Andrew. I was there. Linda and I had the opportunity, and we were thoroughly impressed. They were really well spoken. It was, it was well done, very thoughtful. It really was, I hope to see that again next year.
And giving kids a voice and giving kids, you know, the ability to help make our district a better place is what it's all about. So thank you. Oh, then I have one last thing from Deb. I'm just going to read, as we know, we have a, we have candidates for the board open, so I'm just going to read. Petitions are available for anyone that would like to run for the Board of Education. You can pick those up until, is it, by four o'clock, right? So about eight to four in the district office, so they can be picked up. And Deb, they need to be picked up by April 21st, correct? So the deadline, if anyone's interested in running for the board, is April 21st. Just want to talk about the vacancies a little bit. We have one three-year term commencing July 1st, '25, and that's expiring to June 30th, '28. And I, and I just want to say it, and we'll talk more about it as we go, but this is an expiring term of Muriel Faxon, and Muriel has decided not to run again for the board. So Muriel, 26 years. Muriel truly has given her heart and soul, you know, to this district. And I, I'm really sad that I have only had one year to work with you, Muriel, so please stay in touch, because you've, good. You've been, you've been an inspiration to me, you know, and when I think of Chatham, I think of you. So, you know, you're going to be missed, but hard shoes to fill, but Muriel's position will be open. So thank you, Muriel, for your service. And then we have a one-three-year term commencing on May 21st, '25, expiring June 30th, '28. This is the expiring term of Fred Hutchinson until, until June 30th, '25, and then again the next term from July 1st, '25 to June 30th, '28. And we had a resignation in, in the fall. So what has happened, it gets a little confusing here, but Rachel came onto the board in the fall. And being that there's going to be a board election, Rachel's duty will be done as of May 21st, so whoever gets the most votes gets to come in on May 22nd.
I just want to just clarify one thing that you said.
Please do, please do.
I believe you can pick up the petition through April 21st, but really, it also has to be returned. That's, that's the key, is that you have to actually return it by five o'clock in April...
Got you. Thank you for...
21st. So don't walk in April 21st.
Don't walk, don't come April 21st. At least go by the 20th, because you need to...
Yeah, you'll need a little while to get those signatures.
All right, I think that's all I have. Okay. Thank you.
All right, Mike, your budget presentation.
All right. I have some guests tonight. So first of all, thank everyone for coming tonight. I do want to personally thank Andrew for his presentation on the pre-K and the board's decision. I think that that is the correct decision, and, you know, that I'm really happy that we're able to do that. I'm happy to put something into the budget for that. The other thing, Muriel, and I've worked here 13 years, and I do want to thank everything you've done, not only for the school board, for the community, you know, you've been awesome to work with, so appreciate everything you've done. So I'll start with the budget, and I, like I said, I'll have a couple people speak on some of these line items, but I'll start with the process. So third part of the budget is really summing everything up. Next meeting, next time Finance meets, I want to thank Finance for meeting the other day. We went through all of this and some of the decisions that we need to make. But this sums up the budget. But this sums up the budget and then I will be putting everything together and then I'm also, you know, hopefully we'll get the revenues from the, hopefully they agree on the revenues and we'll get that final revenue number. So I'll be going through that the next meeting with the expenses. So if you go to the next slide. So here's the components of the third part. A lot of its benefits, a lot of its higher costs that the increases to the district that, you know, we're struggling with and not just us. Like I said, I went with Andrew this morning with other superintendents, not even this area. I have a lot of friends, business managers out in Western, New York, and they're doing the same thing. And like I said, the ones that don't have savings or reserves are cutting whole programs out, which is, you know, devastating for the kids. So we're fortunate that we don't have to do that here because we do have our, our reserves and our savings. So transportation, and I'll Josh speak on this, but I'll, I'll start on this slide and then I'll have him come in and talk a little bit more. We sat down and we actually did consolidate two large runs, you know, over the years. When I first started, we did a couple, couple run consolidation the morning and afternoon throughout the district and as enrollments dropped, we have had to consolidate runs because we have less students here. But even with that consolidation, we had some out of district runs that we had to add for special education and we had to have some special education aid. So even with consolidating two runs, we actually did go up about 4.7% because of those other increases. I did pull some money out of fuel. So what I've been doing is I'm pulling in the kind of remaining contingent money I had left because, you know, as times get tighter, we have to pull that out. We're taking a risk with that, but and as inflation has gone up, that's really what's driving all districts is inflation is starting to hit our budgets. Next line, ERS, TRS, so Employee Retirement System, that's the non-instructional staff and TRS's Teacher Retirement System. I was very pleased that this number is actually going down a little bit. I am concerned about this for the next couple of years. We've had a great run with the stock market. Now it's kind of, you know, petering out, so it'll be interesting. That does greatly impact our budget if, what they do is they base it on five years, but and I'll show a graph on the next slide. But when the stock market doesn't do well, then we have massive increases in this line. This one offsets, the Employee Retirement System actually is there six tiers. We don't have anyone, our remaining tier, one person retired last year after 55 years with the district. Very few districts have that, but we have tier four, five and six. That's kind of standard. And what's happening is, I think it was under Governor Cuomo, they added five and six, kind of when I started, they added two new tiers. So you have to pay in longer and the benefit's not as good, but the rates are less. So we have much more people now. It's pretty much split between four and six, four and five and six. So that has helped decrease rates. But ERS, the non-instructional actually went up. So the tier four, for example, went from 17.9 to 19.6%. Tier six, like I said, the newer rate, which we have half our people, went from 11.4 to 12.9. So there's about $45,000 increase in that line for the non-instructional. We were offset with the Teacher Retirement System. That's one rate. That went from 10 to 9.59, since that's a lot larger number than a non-instructional. That actually saved us a little money because that went down 40 or 50,000. So netting out, we're down 4,000. That does help in a difficult year. Some years you're looking at 300,000 increase or 200, so we don't have to face that this year, which helps. But that is a concern over the next couple of years. Social Security, tax shelter annuity. Social Security is just based on income, based on salaries, 7.65%. Tax shelter annuity, we have a small number in here, 2,500. People retire, they get payouts for vacation or for sick leave and we, what we do is we use one of our reserves to pay that, so we don't really use, hit the budget much on that. Health insurance dental is the big one that's hitting, that's what we had the meeting, it's hitting every district. Some of the districts had even higher increases. We did go to the high bucket, so they have different buckets in our consortium and that's on usage and costs of your, your group. So when I started here, we're in the high bucket and then we went down to, you know, the mid level for a number of years. Now we went back up. Like I said, that's on usage and claims. So what happened and I was a little surprised, but I, we were warned, we, you know, at the beginning of January, we get a, we get a rate and then it comes out now with the final rate. I have not put the final rate in yet, I'm going to update that model, I just got that. But we were anticipating 14% for health insurance and six and a half for prescription. And the 13 years are probably 20 years back, if you go back at usually January's rates conservative, meaning the next rate is going to be a little bit less. They did warn us it could go up, I wasn't expecting that. So like Andrew said, the 14 went to 15.3, but the, the prescription really surprised me, six and a half to 12.7. But it was on our usage and what's happening. I did notice in our prescription, I get a monthly analysis. In the last couple of years, we were doing good and we'd actually get a rebate check. So that helped our, we put it in savings, it helped our fund balance. Right now we're running at a deficit, quite a large deficit in that. So I knew, I had a feeling the rates would go higher. And the offset of that is our rates here go up, but on the revenue, we're going to lose a revenue source from the prescription rebate. So we get hit twice. So 470,000, so which I plugged in the numbers this morning, we're going to add another 85,000 to that because of what just happened to the rates. So wasn't anticipating that. And then we're going to see, we're probably going to use some more reserves to cover that. That's going to probably be my recommendation. I still have the revenues and I have to look at interest income if I can bring that down a little bit. That's another big hit to our budget. Debt service, that's our, we had three bonds for our old capital projects. One of them expired, but now we have the new project. So we did an interest only for the one year because we don't have state aid to match it. Otherwise we'd be going up a lot more in our budget. We try to keep this level, so I was very happy, $12,000. There's some good news on that. We were anticipating, for one thing, I think I mentioned, we kept our rating. We had an hour and a half call, so that was great news. So if we, our rating dropped, we'd be paying more in interest. So that was, that was some good news. And then our rates, they did a competitive bid and we were expecting 3.6, 3.7, it came out at 3.39. So we had five people bid on the bond. Four, four were in the 3.5 range. We did have one come in much lower, which is great. So that's going to help in interest cost. So the difference on that, getting that lower rate from what we were predicting is going to save us over the 15-year term, about 360,000. So that was some good news. $30,000 a year. Transfer to library, we went through last meeting, we had Hannah here and go through that. Transfer to special education, so in the summer school, special education classes, the state does play 80, pay 80% of those costs. This is our 20% share that we need to cover, that we send over. Transfer to food service, I'll have Barb speak on that, but another big decrease, $40,000, we're at 50,000 now. When I started, we were about 130,000 and we had a lot more kids. So what happened was when everything went free and thanks for Barb, Barb for everything she does, our participation has gone through the roof. So they like the food, that's actually helped us tremendously. There is obviously a risk, federal funds are like $300,000 we're getting for this. So if that gets hit, then 300,000, you know, I don't know if that's going to happen, but that is a risk, you know, what we're looking at. So we're going to see where that heads because that's a big number from the federal government. Transfer to capital, so that's our two buses that we purchased, our buses. So we're, I think it's 295,000, Josh can go over the slide, a large bus and a medium bus. Still much less, you know, we talk about EV, we're getting some of them, but you know, an EV bus is about 400,000. So I'm happy we're not looking at that yet. So 295,000 covers two buses. And then there's $100,000 project, so that's going to, and Josh can talk about that in the bus garage, we're going to switch tanks because our heating tank is, for our heating fuel is much larger than the actual diesel tank that we fill up the buses and they're coming all the time. So we're going to transfer those tanks and switch that. So bottom, well, we have the tanks, we're going to switch what we use because the heating oil fills up once every couple of months and then the diesel's multiple times a week. So we're going to switch those tanks because the heating oil, obviously just to heat that place, we use much less. So they're going to do a project to fix that. Um, let me see what else here. No. No. To do a whole project, just for, we did kind of look at, oh, if we want to upgrade that facility, the pumps and the tanks and, you know, that's 3, $400,000. That's a capital project, not something we can do within the district. So total benefit, total transportation benefits, 4.42%. Obviously that's a large number, it's going to be a little higher now because of the health insurance. So this is, these are the big numbers for our budget. You know, the next slide. This is the Teacher Retirement System rates, as I was, it's just one rate, the green line is where we're at, so you can see a dip. I am happy to see, if you look from 2019 to 26, they've been, even though the market's doing well, they do it on a five-year average, but you know, they, they figure things out for multiple years in the future. Happy there's not great fluctuations in these numbers. You can see in the early 2000s, the market was good, the numbers were almost nothing and then they shot way up. That volatility is, is very difficult for districts as we don't, we can't save money for that. So when I started in, what, 2012, 2008, I think, nine, we had some problems, you can see the rate went down and then it shot way up. So those years when 14 and 15, those are massive increases and massive increases of budget. So this has helped this volatility. I'm hoping it kind of stays in that level, which will help us going forward. Next slide. Now transportation, I'll have Josh come up and speak on the, speak on the slide here. This is his final presentation for Chatham Central School and, you know, please announce he's, you know, I hate to see him leave, but he did take a job up in Corinth, so I want him to do his final presentation before he heads out the end of this week. So Josh, you can take, take over.
Thanks, Mike. Okay, so as Mike mentioned, we are looking at run consolidation. We did consolidate two runs this past year for a variety of factors, including staffing constraints. We are going to be working with a contractor to go through all the runs to see where we can actually consolidate. The goal is to possibly consolidate one, maybe two runs within the district. But they're going to take a look at that, they've already started the process. It's going to take a little bit of time, but hopefully we'll have it wrapped up here in the not-so-distant future. Also, as Mike mentioned regarding fuel storage, a project that we're looking at is switching our fuel oil tank to diesel. The fuel oil tank is approximately 2,500 gallons and the heating oil is 600 gallons. So if we switch them, it'll help with limiting the amount of times that the company comes and actually delivers diesel. Because over the last couple of years, our ratios have changed. At one time, we were able to purchase 66 passenger buses with gas engines in them. And then the company went out of business and they weren't making them anymore. So we had to revert back to diesel. So we have our ratio starting to go back to more diesel, but that may change in the future with the new gas combustion engine that is coming on the market for, for type C buses. When that's going to come out, I have no clue. So that's the ultimate goal, doing that for the upcoming year. As also as Mike mentioned, we are purchasing a 66 passenger diesel international, however we'd like to, and also a 35 passenger Type A. We've purchased one in the past, two years ago, we purchased one and we found to be very versatile. On average, for a Type A, you're looking from between 24 to 30 passenger, which are most of our Type As are smaller buses, but with 35 passenger, we can actually utilize it more, utilize it for more of the smaller sports trips for out of, out of district runs, sporting events, or even for smaller classrooms, which in the long run would actually be a savings in terms of fuel costs as well as maintenance and wear and tear. As always, we're always trying to recruit drivers. We've actually done very well with attendants coming in this past year, last year, like what I've done in the past, we've had the open house and we actually had the news lat one morning in June with me throughout the morning showing what it takes to become a bus driver. And we actually got some applications out of that, that was really impressive. I was very pleased with that. But as of right now, we have had one driver that has come back since the beginning of September, but we haven't had any, any luck with training anybody else. So as always, they will, the department will continue with recruitment efforts. And bus routing software, we're always continuing with training. We're still working out some little kinks with the system. It's a constant battle when it comes to this because there's always updates, there's always something new that we're still learning about and it's something, it's an ongoing thing. So we're constantly training and we're getting ready to slowly implement it within the system.
Go to the next slide. Josh, you can do the replacement plan. You can do the replacement plan, but I just wanted to just point, we talked about the cost of the two buses, but the one thing is that every dollar we spend, we get approximately 19 cents back in aid. This is one of the big changes in our aid because our property valuation went up so much. So they base it on our property wealth and in our income, but property wealth's driving it. Used to be 32 cents, so buses and all the, all the costs out in the transportation, we get 32 cents back for every dollar. That's gone down to 19, so that's why we had a huge revenue decreases for going for next year. You go to the next slide.
All right, so our bus replacement, as you know, for this upcoming year, we have our oldest buses in the fleet that are going to be going away. They are, have been very reliable. We have used them as our spares, we've used them on our sports trips. They've been very reliable, but now we can let them go to the wayside, if you will. Big, the big push with this was not only with the EV, but for the ability to purchase buses last year, which one of them we are, our type C 66 diesel should be here in April. So that will replace bus 207, which is one of our mainline buses. And then as you'll notice over the next few years, we're going to be starting to get into buses that we have now that are going to reach about nine, 10, 11 years at that time, which initially, when I started here, we were looking at buses that were going up to anywhere from 15 to 20 years. So now we are looking at a range of 10 to 12 on average, which is a great thing, especially when it comes to preventative maintenance, long-term costs. Because as time progresses, as we all know, with older vehicles comes more money you have to sink into the vehicle. So with us turning back to 10 to 12 years, and this will, this could be a substantial savings to the district.
What does WC?
WC means Bus Equipped With A Wheelchair Lift Bar.
Bus 207, is that gas or diesel?
That is diesel.
Okay. Mechanical problems?
It's actually more a combination of mechanical and body. With some of these buses, there was a certain timeframe where we had buses that were purchased, but they're running into substantial body-based problems. And with DOT requirements, we would have to go through and actually replace some of the panels to meet DOT spec. And they are not cheap, they are very expensive. We're talking thousands of dollars and for us to have it sent out for a shop to do that. Case in point, we did have a quote for one that was upwards of $8,000 to $10,000 just to replace a back panel. So that's one of the reasons why we have that slated to go.
Okay. Yeah, we've had a few of those in the last few years, so.
Yes. There is one other thing I would like to point out, there are a couple of buses that are slated to be traded in for the EV program, which we were able to work with between EPA, Leonard Bus and Columbia County, that we are able to actually donate one of the buses slated for EV to the Fire Training Center for Columbia County. And that bus will be taken down there this week. We're taking it out of service, so it's going to be used for training purposes.
I just want to, when it comes to EV busing, hot topic. The district is not planning on applying for any additional EV funding at this time, we've decided. As we know, there is a date out there, but all indication is showing that that date of having to purchase EV buses is going to be pushed back sooner than later. Nobody's ready to go there. Most districts haven't even, you know, started the process, Chatham is ahead, because we did apply for some of them and we, we have shown a, our due diligence that we were trying to move forward with, that we've hit a lot of struggles. We've had some challenges with the electric charging, our buses not charging, we haven't even utilized them yet. And we don't see us planning to utilize those EV buses for a bit. You know, they're not on the road because they're not ready to be on the road. So I just wanted to, while we're talking about transportation, all indication at the state level is that those dates are going to be pushed back.
That bus was from a grant.
Correct. The district spent, yeah, thank you for bringing that up. The district spent $0 of taxpayer dollars on those buses. Those were all through grants, so nothing was through taxes on that for the budget.
Now, we have four buses that are, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to.
Yeah, go ahead. I'm done.
We have four Type As that we are still waiting to be delivered under the grants. This has been something that's been a long, drawn-out process. We have been working with the manufacturer, the sales company. We have been meeting with them on numerous occasions and they keep pushing up the timeline. But we have been assured that they're coming between now and sometime between now and then. But we were told now it's going to be April, but that may change.
That is one thing. I mean, they were free, so that's why, you know, we got, I was happy that Josh, you get the money and there was discussion about this going to have to happen, so we wanted to try five. Just so everyone knows, we have the chargers, we, we have the electrical capacity for five, that's it. There's no more we could have without a major upgrade to our electrical system. So, and the other thing is, like you said, if we were relying on these, we're supposed to get them last year. And now we're waiting for four. We have one and the one we have, we can't put in production because we've had two major problems that have to go back to the dealer. So like we said, I don't, you know, I think we're really ready for this stuff yet. I think since they were paid, they're supposedly going to be on a, you know, I don't know if they're on a ship yet, where they're coming from, but I'm okay with having the five. I mean, like I said, I'm gonna, you know, we have five, it was all paid for. We can try them out, we can see how they work. Obviously, we're not getting rid of our plan to not purchase the other buses, but the biggest thing, not just for here, every district, you know, how are you going to have the electrical capacity from even NISIC, from NISIC or even that, the upgrades for all that? It's multi-million, who knows how much money that's going to be, but. So I think it's going to be down the road, but I wouldn't mind trying some. We're going to see how they work. We got to make sure that they're ready for the road to go first.
I just want to thank Josh for your commitment to the district over the past couple of years. You'll be missed and good luck in your, your district.
I'll let Brian Simon talk about special education.
Hello, everyone. So Josh is going to be missed greatly, so it's another big job, another position to fill. There are times when I'm on the phone with Josh four or five times a week easily, when I need something for a special run for a student who's having difficulties on a bus. Josh could not be more responsive. It happens immediately. I never went to complaint or anything. It just, okay, I'll get it done and it happens. So thank you, Josh, for everything you've done for all of the special needs. Next, you usually put me after Barb, which is impossible to follow, so thank you for restructuring this because Barb's always a hit and I don't have to follow her, so that's fantastic. I was going to be short and concise, but I have a few additional things from listening to the conversation tonight. Thank you for the UPK piece. It's huge. Chatham may be one of the only districts around where we can say all of our students who require preschool speech are getting it 100%. There is a massive shortage of providers in our region. EI and preschool services, kids are not receiving services right now. So that is something very worrisome about kids moving, coming forward who haven't been receiving services. Our Chatham kids have if they require speech. When they hear our UPK, it's easy. Our speech and language pathologists just schedule them. If it's a three-year-old, then it is. How do we move them around? And our speech therapists work so hard to reschedule, shuffle, to make it happen. It's never that I don't have room in my schedule. They find a way to make it happen. Don't always know how they're doing it, but they do. And we're still at 100% of our preschools kids receiving speech, so have to thank them. The other piece that came up is our decreasing enrollment and it has been going down. And that's becoming an ongoing issue that's going to need to be addressed. It's a worrisome piece. As you're addressing that, keep in mind, student needs are not going down. So we, it just hasn't coincided. You would think as enrollment went down, the number of students with student needs would go down with it. That has not happened. Not sure why, whether it's a COVID-related piece or something else or other factors, but it's, we're not seeing that decrease. So it creates a higher percentage of our students in district with needs. Our special education teachers, related service providers, school psychologists, social workers are nonstop needing IP 504 demands of students. So that piece hasn't decreased for them. As we're moving forward, a big piece right now is planning for Stephanie, which I'm very excited about. She brings something to a position that I have not been able to bring. She has her background in curriculum and technology and how creative she is. She will, I think, be able to lead the department in areas that just are not my area of expertise and I wasn't able to. Probably a few weeks before she applauded, I was on the phone with Stephanie before, maybe it was even posted. I'm not sure the timing of it, asking her to come in to do lessons for our special needs students and see what she can come in and do for that. So, so now, you know, we don't need the contractor to even come in here to do it. So, so that's a piece. So that was even before I knew she was going to apply. I was on the phone with Stephanie. Stephanie, you can use it here. So that's in this mix for a really nice transition. A lot of the time right now within the department is planning for Stephanie and my departure. We've done some stuff with that already. Typically, I sit in on every CSC meeting. It is very hard not for me to do every CSC meeting. It's kind of wondering what's happening there when I'm not there. But we've used subchairs this year, so Renee Morgan, Rachel Train, Kevin Dooley, the majority of the meetings. I do some too. But through that, we should have everything more organized for Stephanie come end of June. Because typically for our parents who get IP's in the mail, you know, you're usually not getting them to August because that's because I'm working on them in June and July. Can't do that this year. So through using subchairs, we should be able to get all the IP's out much quicker this year. So that's another piece that's happening. And then when Stephanie comes in, it's a lot about getting to know the families, the students, the staff, everyone she's going to be working with. She'll be able to attend a lot of the CSC meetings. If you look at, if I start, starting May 1st, she'll be able to attend all of the preschool meetings, which is excellent. These are families and children she might know for the next 15-plus years, you know, for a three-year-old. So it's a long-term relationship with the family and the students, so she gets to start that process. She will also be able to attend all of our outplaced students, some of her highest-need students who we don't have appropriate programs here for in Chatham, and she'll get to go meet those students and visit those programs and get into the classrooms and see the kids and see what's happening with those students. Also work on some of the other nitty-gritty stuff, like the not-so-fun parts, like the federal grants and that piece, like it's done every June. So she'll get to, you know, get to see that part. Looking at budget pieces, some changes that are taking place. We are, if you look at from this past September to next September, we are going to have three less students that we're contracting with not to. So that is a combination of a couple of students who are older, who are transitioning to adult services, and a couple of students who are currently paying to go out to return to the district. So we will have three less students out, which is a nice piece, which is a nice savings for that. We also have some in-house changes taking place. And some of this is a lot of shuffling to try to make things work for a decreasing population and a small district. We end up with sometimes periods of time where we have certain age groups with certain needs and then all of a sudden it goes away at certain age groups. And how do we make that happen to still provide, you know, strong, appropriate educations for kids here? One of the things that's happening is we don't have a population of our life skills kids ready to leave elementary school to the middle school and the ages of everyone. The middle school life skills classroom that Meg Thorson has been teaching is not going to be there next year. Those kids are moving up to the high school. So there'll be five students at the high school program. Teresa Nolan is going to be retiring also this year, as you know. So she is, that's a position that we're not rehiring for, which is one less staff there. And Meg Thorson is going to be going up to the high school piece on that. So that's going to be a change there. We also have some changes at the elementary school mid-last year because a lot of students were able to get pushed out into our co-tour classrooms. We were able to close one of our language concepts classrooms at the elementary school. We're going to need that classroom back again next year, so there'll be some reshuffling at the elementary school to make that happen. But one of the unique parts on this is this is a couple of students from, coming up from preschool and also that we're bringing back into district. We're going to have a small, non-verbal classroom at the elementary school. So it's going to be a classroom of six students that Mr. Botzford's testing, teaching, that are all using augmented, alternative communication systems, AAC systems. So, and we have a great group of speech and language pathologists to assist with that. So it's going to be very interesting. I'm actually going to miss seeing what happens and that's an exciting room next year. So having a room of students who are just having to use augmented communication is going to be a very interesting thing for the district and how that moves forward. As you know, we're doing this, we're in annual review season now. So a lot of what we're doing now is based on meetings that we've already had and projections moving forward based on meetings. So this is a little bit of a moving target, so it's hard to come up with a special education budget for the following year when you're still planning on this year. But based on some scheduling and student needs, I do think we're going to have a reduction of aids that are needed on IP's for students who have one-on-one or shared aid. So we should have a better reduction of four, but that is a moving target. And some of that happens through some creative scheduling, so students with shared aids being together. It's not always less, but we do see some reduction in that. In terms of ESY programs, we ran four classrooms last year. We're going to be running three ESY classrooms this year. However, we will meet all of our needs in-house. Other years, we've had to contract with Questar for some students to go out of district to Questar programs. We will be able to meet the needs of all of our extended school year students. Those are our students with IP's that have significant regression when they are not in school. So we do the six-week program to maintain that and we'll be posting for those positions in a couple of weeks, probably. Then the other piece, just thinking about when you look at the monies in here, Mike always leaves some contingency monies in this. So we have to provide free and appropriate public education for all students. And we have a moving target, you know, so there has to be extra monies here. If a couple of high-cost students move into district in the summer, we need to have the funds for them. So there's always those extras in here, the, so we can meet, so we have the budget monies for things that happen and it happens every summer. You know, we don't know who's moving in. So there's a snapshot. Guys, have any questions?
Thank you.
Good, thank you.
I'll have Barb, our cafeteria supervisor, go through the cafeteria budget, kind of what's going in in the cafeteria.
Hello, everyone. Hope everyone is well. I'll start off with, I always like to bring you treats, so I gave you a cinnamon scone, a blueberry muffin and a little parfait. Little treat to get you through the night. All right, so I'm going to start with CEP or Community Eligible Eligible, I can't even say it tonight, never mind, Provision. Gotcha. All right. Which is a meal service option for low-income area school districts that allow schools to offer meals at no cost to all students. Last school year, USDA lowered the chance from 60% that had to be free or reduced to 25, which gave us the option to apply, which we did and we were approved. So that was a really great thing for our district. By doing that, it has really helped with giving the kids, you know, the opportunity to come in and get some, some meals and have the opportunity for lunch at no cost. Because of this, our meal numbers have increased. Also, our sales of snacks have increased. So if Mike or whoever could bring up the, all right. So I'm going to show you our numbers from when we had school last year, from September to February, 23, 24 to September, February of this year. For breakfast, you will see that on the average, we're close to double at the middle and high school and up pretty high at the elementary school. Really great to see it at the high school being much higher than it was for the previous years. And then if we want to look at lunch, you can go to the next slide. Again, you're going to see a good increase, a good 10% increase, which I'm happy with. Again, at our high school, that has been our biggest jump with a 12% increase from last year. So we're very happy with that. My staff works really hard to make sure that they're doing good food for the students and good choices. With, of course, with the increased number of meals, it means that we have to buy more food, which means our costs have gone up. The cost of food seems to be increasing each year. With that, I try to utilize our USDA products more, which is food that we get every year, about $45,000 worth. I also try to continue to order what's called the DOD Fresh Fruit and Vegetable Program, which I can order both local and non-local fruit and vegetables. And we can choose how much we want to put away of that $45,000. I did $10,000 this year, so that goes actually pretty far. So I will, you know, keep doing that as much as I can, as long as they offer it to help keep the cost down. Another thing that I like to do is meet with the high school student government, which I did just in February. I was able to listen to what they were looking for, what, you know, what they didn't like, what they liked, what they wanted. I was able to accommodate a few things and I'm still working on a few other things for them to see if we can make some changes. Another thing I always try to do is new menu ideas. I look as much as possible at other schools and see what they're serving at social media sites that are geared towards school lunches. I also look at the websites of the companies that we use. For example, Lando Lakes, they offer K-12, you know, recipes, so I'll utilize that as much as I can. One of the items that we tried this year was a chicken ramen bowl. Mixed reviews here and there. Another one was something that was called the Korean-inspired beef with wodels. Wodels are just ramen noodles that are whole grain. So that is a cheryaki-flavored ground beef over the noodles with some cheese sauce and fresh scallions on top. And I actually got very good reviews on that. A lot of the high schoolers especially loved it. So, you know, we did that a few times and it went well. Tomorrow, we're trying beef and broccoli for the first time. I'm on an Asian kick, obviously. So we'll see how that goes and we're going to try fried rice next month and then see what else comes our way. So I think that's it. Any questions?
The, the CEP program is really interesting in terms of the impact on the numbers here. And I know you work hard on the menu and we've had some successes. We saw an increase the last two years on, on service. I think a chunk of that's menu and a chunk of that's the CEP and return from COVID. The, I did, did not expect to see another bump this year, so that's really great. I'm curious how much of that is because we only had a partial year CEP. Do you have any gut instinct on that, like?
I expected it to go up, but I honestly did not expect it to go up that high compared to the previous years. So no real gut instinct on it. I just hoped that we would, you know, be able to feed a good population. I mean, feeding 70% of the elementary school students, I don't know, I'm proud to be able to say that because they're the pickiest eaters that we have. But that's something that we do try to do is accommodate. I have one student in our elementary who refuses to eat anything but a bagel. I have a bagel every day for her, just so she has something to eat. So I've said it a few times, I think Mike and I had this conversation, that if the kids don't like it, they're not going to eat it whether it's free or not. So I think we're doing something good, I think.
I, I just want to say, Barb, it's truly is a testament to you and your team. Talking to colleagues in other districts that have, have been eligible for this, they're not seeing the same results because the product isn't as delicious as yours. That's what I'm saying. I'm making that inference. So it's really a testament to you and having delicious food because let me tell you, if it wasn't great, 70% of the kids in the high school would not be eating it. So testament to you.
Well, thank you.
And I just, you know, I want to second that, but also I'm, I came here 13 years ago when you, you know, we talked, you like to meet with the student government. You actually want to get their input. I know sometimes we have to follow really strict guidelines for nutrition, so we can't do everything that they want, but you do try to make that effort. You try things and some work, some don't, but that's really, I think, made a big difference when I talked to other districts with, you know, what we have. And we get the fresh fruit and all that, so I think that those things and what you do really make the difference.
Well, thank you.
So I have a, and this is probably a finance question. At what point during the year do we know if federal government is going to be extending that CEP program guideline?
You know, it's not making it, it's already a tough time, but all this, all the unpredictability of the federal government is making it much harder for us to plan. I've gone to several planning meetings. The, the programs that I've been hearing that are in the most jeopardy are, one of them is the food program from the federal government. And the second one is, that is E-Rate, which is a, which you can subsidize some technology costs. Those are two that could be on the chopping block or have changes, is what I'm hearing. When it comes to special education and title funding, they're not, I'm not thinking that's going to change. They're predicting that won't change, but this could be, it's likely that this could be amended due to the federal government changes. So what, what would that mean? We would have to make some changes to the budget and how much we would, we would put to that.
Yeah, I mean, I would go so far as to say, at the board level, we should begin discussions on what contingencies might look like because if there's a hard, I don't want to rush a hard choice. I don't, like if we end up with a partial year situation or.
I'm hearing rumors they're going to go back to 20, they're going to go back to 60%. That's what I'm hearing rumors.
Yeah.
So if we can get an idea of what that number would look like here in Chatham.
And when?
Yeah.
But, but what, what would the, what would, I, I mean, I remember seeing the big budget transfers we used to have to do, which is you're, you're not supposed to do in the food program and.
No. And also, we. And also, we, right now, it's free for everyone. So we'd probably go back to the paying model, you know, that we'd have to look at that. We'd have to look at all that because then you're talking $200,000, $300,000. I mean, we could look at that, but that would be a massive impact.
If. I don't want to make it a larger discussion tonight, but I think we should begin that conversation.
Yeah, we should start planning. We're at about 40% Barb, pre-reduced?
Roughly, 42.
Yeah, so if they go to 60%, that means we wouldn't be, only those students would be eligible, not the whole group. So we would likely lose participation because families would have to pay for the.
Yeah, I mean, there's, there's, there's some stuff there to dig into.
Yeah, yep. We'll do our, it's hard to plan during these unknown times, but we certainly will do our best to do that.
Yeah, just the what-if conversation. That was it for food, other than, thanks for bringing us fun stuff here.
You're welcome, you're welcome. Is that it? Alright, thank you, Barb. Thank you, have a good night.
Now we go to the next slide.
Can I, can I rewind, since we're done with the departments, can I rewind back to the health insurance real quick?
Sure.
I know that we were telegraphed a forecast a few months ago. I don't remember how the trust operates things. Do they have a multi-year average or reserve system at all? Like, do we know what's going to happen next year, what's likely?
I mean, obviously, we don't know if the rates, the rates are catching up. So to be honest with you, I'm not super shocked on this. A, we went in the high bucket. So we're going to pay more because it's our usage. So our usage wasn't high, now it's high, you're going to pay more. We're in buckets, though. So if it wasn't a bucket, you might be going up 20% or 25%. So that does nullify that. But the trust, so you know, the trust ran a deficit last year, I think a couple million. They don't keep, they don't keep reserves, so, you know, they have a very small reserve balance. They give the money back to us. There are going to be discussions, you know, going forward on that. So they covered it, we didn't get billed, but they can't cover another deficit. So, you know, we're looking at every possible avenue. But what's happening is after COVID, I was expecting rates to go up. They didn't go up much. We've been actually fortunate. And if I look at, like I look in the Northeast, I talk about in the Finance Committee, the Northeast average rate for a employer this size, we were trending below that for health insurance. Health insurance is expensive, we have a premium plan. So we were trending below it. So when you're trending 3%, 4%, that helped us those years and you're going to pay for it at some point in time. And that's what's kind of happening. I don't expect this to continue to happen. You know, we had a big bump up, so I'm hoping that next year we level out some. But health averages 8, 7, 8%. I mean, that's what it, long-term.
I don't, I don't know what's legal, but I know that that trust is, you know, run by the districts in it. When we get those, when we get those refunds back. I mean, it sure would be nice if this was spread over two years, I guess, is what I'm thinking. So to have that be, you know, get the notice in December that we then have to make room for it, just like three months later, is sort of rough.
Well, what I was, what's challenging is usually in January, that number is going to come down. They did warn us and I warned the board that is the first time they ever said it might actually go up. I still didn't think that would happen. But one of the things did happen is we did go into the higher bucket. So, and that's on usage and that, you know, that's happened recently. Like I said, our prescriptions have been running positive the last five years, four years. Now we're running negative deficits. So when that happens, they got to raise rates. But also when they're negotiating these contracts, and like I said, we have an excellent health insurance plan. The rates with the doctors and everything, they control a lot of that, right? We negotiate, we have consultants, we try our best, but they, they're driving a lot of it because inflationary costs. Inflation's hitting, you know, it's hitting everything and health insurance is one of them. So you're right, this, if this was happening every year, we'd have a major problem, right? So hopefully that'll come back down some next year and, you know, it'll be something we have to deal with. But if, I look at long-term too, over the last seven years, it's, the rates aren't, they're less, trending less than the average.
And there are no buckets for prescription. So some districts in our consortium are going up over 40% for prescriptions in one year. So we're about 12%, but can you imagine 40% as some of them learned at that meeting on Friday? Because there's not buckets for that. So whatever your usage is, is what you go up. So those districts were hit really hard with usage. And all it takes is a couple very expensive prescriptions. You know, life-saving prescriptions that people are going through to bump that rate up like that. All it can take is one or two.
So if we look at the draft now, this is updated. I still have to update, actually, two things. The pre-K, I'll put the money in for the pre-K. And I think that was $35,000 and then about 85 for the health insurance. So we're going to get closer to $1.1 million deficit. So expenses, 3.98%. Like I said, I have to add in the health insurance, another $85,000 in the pre-K, so another 100 grand to that. Revenues, I will be going over the next meeting. I don't anticipate a lot of changes. We're getting the minimum, you know, if that 2% holds for foundation aid, that'd be great. Because remember, our operating aid, we have, since our enrollment's down so much, we should be. They were talking about the hold harmless and they could be taking 1.6 million from us. So that's, sounds like that's off the table for a year, so that helps us. But we did have, and I'll show again, the BOCs and transportation aid, we had major hits because of our wealth. So that's not going to increase. And then reserves, we use $91,000, so like we said, we carry over. And then, you know, we'll discuss that another, if we go to the next slide. Yep, this is Andrew's turn.
Okay, I get to do the fun stuff. It's actually not fun. Some of the most difficult things I have to do as a superintendent is talking about reductions. You know, when I became a superintendent five years ago, you know, I had these intentions of going to programs and bringing more opportunities for students in schools. And I haven't been able to do that due to these budgets. So when we found out in the fall that we were going to have a difficult budget year, you know, I started September 1st, we started to have discussions as an administrative team. We saw the writing on the wall and we saw what the budget was going to look like. We saw that we were getting reductions. We saw the increase in costs and we predicted a deficit. And that's exactly what we're seeing. So our administrative team came together. You know, one of the hardest parts of being an administrator is we have to make these decisions and recommendations for the board when it comes to looking at our budget. Like I said, we cannot, it would be, it would be really hard and it would be a disservice to the community for the future of Chatham to take all million dollars out of that, out of fund balance. Because that means you would have a million dollars next year and we're going to have likely another reduction, another deficit next year. So if we continue, if we did that, if we used our fund balance to pay this without rightsizing and without looking at reductions, we would be doing a disservice to our community because we would run out of those reserves in a couple of years. So we made the decision that we're going to have to look at reductions. So our administrative team came together and it was really, really hard meetings because no one in that room wants to reduce anything. Everyone in that room, all of our administrators, all of our Board of Education is proud of every single service that we provide our students, every single educator that we have. We're a family here in Chatham. The last thing we want to do is reduce positions. But we have to. So we have to come together and we came up with considerations for reductions. How do we make these really difficult decisions in these really difficult times? So we came up with five pieces that we promised as a group to consider when we were looking at having to make reductions in our budget. The first one is we have to base our reductions on current enrollment. Our elementary school class sizes are shrinking yearly. And I'll, and I'll be reviewing that with you. And it's going to be catching up to the middle school very soon and also the high school. So some of these reductions that we're going to talk about are having to be made at the elementary due to enrollment. We need to utilize retirements and resignations because the last thing we want to do is lay off our people. So we're going to have to really utilize when somebody resigns or somebody retires to look to see if we can do without rehiring that position. And that's to save people from getting laid off. It's the right thing to do. But there are some positions that are retiring that we need, you know, that we can't do that. So every one of those positions are going to have to be looked at year to year as we're going forward. We promised as a team to make sure we're impacting the least amount of students. We're here for the kids, so we don't want it to impact, impact our students. We want to maintain student programming opportunities. So that means we don't want to get rid of or reduce entire programs or entire opportunities for students. We want to continue to be able to provide the experiences for our kids because we're only here for the kids. That's why we're all here. And then we, of course, have to follow state mandates. So there are some areas that are fully mandated that we have to, by law, give our students those opportunities. Let's go to the next slide. Well, we're going to go to this, no, not that one yet. Next slide from here.
Enrollment slide?
Yep. No, go back to this one here. Go back, just go to the next slide and that, the following slide from number 13. I know you, you were so close to being ready there. We're going to that other slide next. Okay, so as we said, we need to look at enrollment. So I want to, I want to go through the elementary enrollment and I'll be sending this to all staff, these presentations to the staff tomorrow. So that pre-K one, we're going to change because currently we have two sections and we're going to have two sections next year as well. So that will be a total of right now of 32 students in that. So we'll be updating that after this meeting. Let's look at kindergarten. So kindergarten, if you look over all the way to the right current number of sections, that's this school year. So this school year, we have four sections of kindergarten with 64 students. Next year, we're predicting 50 students. So that would be a reduction of one kindergarten classroom next year. So next year, we'll have three sections of kindergarten. And what that means is we'll have class sizes about 16 or 17. Research shows that an ideal elementary classroom is 20, 18 to 20. As you can see, even with these reductions, our, our number is never above 20, never above 20 students. If you look at first grade, first grade last year, we have three students, we had three sections because we have a bigger 64 in first grade next year, who's currently in kindergarten. We're going to be adding a section to first grades. We'll have four sections and every class at this point will have 16 kids in it. For second grade, we're going to stay the same. This year, we have 54 students with three sections. Next year, we have 47 students with three sections of 15 or 16 kids. Third grade, last year, we had, we, this current year, we have four of 58. Our third grade class sizes are a little bit smaller with four. Next year, we're moving that to three. We'll have 54 students in it with 18 in every class. For fourth grade, we're keeping it consistent. Last year, we had 48, next year, we have 58. But we can still maintain a class size of 19 or 20 in fourth grade. For fifth grade, right now, we have four sections of 56. Next year, we'll have 48 kids for three sections for a total of 16 kids in every class. So you can see, as painful it is as to reduce these sections, it makes sense with the class size. It's hard to do and I know having more kids in our classes are hard. But if you compare these to other school districts in the region, these numbers are still on the lower side for our, for our classrooms. You'll notice we don't have, you know, anything less than 16 or 15, which is really is a good thing. You know, it's our job as, it's your job as the board to make sure that we're utilizing every dollar and those class sizes really do work for what we're looking at. So all in all, it's a, it's a reduction of two sections. Because don't forget, we're adding one for first grade. So it's two sections reduction in our elementary school. Okay, so I just wanted to point that out to everybody. Next year, we'll probably be studying the middle school numbers a little bit closer because these numbers are going to be going into the middle school and then also the high school because the sizes are small. Just for perspective, we have a junior class of 97 this year. And our largest class in the elementary school is 64. And you can see some of our classes are even in the 40s. So it's concerning that enrollment is dropping that much. If I had a wish, I would have these all be 100. It would make things, you know, much more efficient for the districts. We can maintain our, all of our teachers. So now it's the tough part. So this was one of the things we had to utilize, right? So we had to make really difficult decisions based on enrollment, based on all those things we said. And we're having to make reductions. As a superintendent, this is the most difficult part of my job. Last week, I had to, I had to meet with, I met with 11 people to tell them that it's a possibility that their, that their position may be reduced. And I'm a firm believer in transparency and honesty. So I wanted, before we talked about any positions here in this board meeting, I wanted to talk to each of those people one-to-one. It's the most difficult thing I have to do as a leader, but it is part of my, my job. And I told them that there's, their position's being discussed and it's being recommended to the board to reduce due to enrollment and due to the criteria that we put together. Worst thing I have, I have to do as a, as a leader. But again, it's my responsibility as a superintendent. So can you go to that next page for reductions? So go to that other chart. Yep, reduction.
While he's pulling that up, do you know where we're at for kindergarten registrations right now?
So 50.
We're at 50. Okay.
Right, Chris said 50 is the number, yeah? 51.
Great.
Yeah, and we're still accepting enrollment as we go? Alright, so this is where it gets tough. Now each, I just want to remind the community that each one of these people, each one of these positions is really a person. And that's what makes this so hard. You know, we don't want to see any of our, our people go. The good news is, is today you made a decision that's going to keep a person in our, in our district. We're going to try to utilize as many people as we can, so we don't have to, you know, even though people are on notice that they could be laid off, that decision will be made until a couple of weeks from now because we want to try to preserve as many people as we possibly can. So the recommendation is that we are going to be, we are going to be reducing an elementary teacher and that's based on only needing three sections of kindergarten. And you can see that number, that's, that's the number. And the numbers vary because it depends upon the person that is leaving and what their salary is, including benefits. So that's why the numbers fluctuate. And you see a second elementary teacher being reduced, only needing three sections of third grade. Now, there is going to be a change for the district is that we had a resignation of our elementary librarian. So we are going to be posting for a library position that will be an elementary position. So based on this, we are only going to be losing one elementary teacher on staff because we're going to be posting that one of our elementary teachers can go into a, a new position in the library that will be reconfigured, but we'll talk more about that at another time. At the elementary school, based on the reduction of classrooms, we can, we can have one less teacher assistant. So there's a reduction of one teacher assistant. And then we're recommending a reduction of one aide, same type of thing, reduction of classrooms needing less support. So all in all, you can scroll down just a little bit. That's a reduction of $211,149 from the elementary school. And then scroll down. Now, this one is now null and void. So this would have had no impact on the budget because it was based on grant funding. We were talking about one UPK teacher, one teacher assistant. So that means tomorrow, I get the pleasure of telling, and this is all by seniority on the seniority list, I get the pleasure of telling one of the teachers I talked to last week that you actually will have a job here in Chatham next year because of the UPK classroom. So that's one less teacher, one less teacher assistant that will be laid off next year. And that's all based on seniority lists and that's New York State regulation. Middle school reductions. Same type of thing. You know, we're looking at our numbers, looking at enrollment. We feel confident that we could reduce two teacher assistants next year based upon enrollment and based on student need. Also, one aide from the elementary teacher. And this is a hard one. An AIS, they're all hard, but AIS teacher. This is based on enrollment and utilizing current staff that we have. We have some teachers at the middle school that have four. We all know in the middle school, you can have up to five classes. We have some that have four and some of our staff will be using a fifth section to teach AIS to fill them up. So they are full-time. So that's where we get utilizing current staff from. So we'll be utilizing staff, so there'll be, some of our teachers will be assigned an AIS block. And they'll be getting training and Terry will be working closely with that group to provide that. So again, during difficult times, we have to make difficult decisions. So we're reducing an AIS teacher at the, at the middle school. Can scroll down to the high school. We talked about utilizing retirements. We have a social studies teacher retiring. So based on our numbers, we are going to have four social studies teachers at the high school. And we're confident that we can, due to enrollment and due to our numbers decreasing, we could provide, provide social studies to all of our 9 to 12 with four social studies teachers. And that could mean less elective opportunities for kids, right? But, but again, we feel as if this is the best decision based on these difficult times. So you'll see, it's only on this, it's $66,319 savings because Mike already subtracted half of that from the budget prior to developing, you know, these reductions. because Mike already subtracted half of that from the budget prior to developing, you know, these reductions. So it's actually a sixty-six-thousand-dollar savings because he already reduced some of that because of their retirement, yeah? Same with special education. You know, this was a hard decision too. But we, based on our numbers and based on the small numbers in our life skills classroom, we can combine the middle school and high school course together, and we'll have one skills classroom, life skills classroom instead of two. So we have a, we have a, another great teacher retiring, and we decided we're not going to, we're not going to rehire for that position. Based on retirement. And then based on that, due to combining the life skills classrooms, we're going to need one less TA. And we're also going to need one less aide because some of the aides will be sharing different responsibilities. So that's a total of a hundred-and-ninety-eight-thousand-eighty dollars for reduction. So that's a grand total from reduction from the budget of five-hundred-ninety-six-thousand-eight-hundred-and-eighty-four dollars. And that number is going to make that deficit that we talked about, that's going to be one-point-one less in order to balance the budget. So if you scroll down, not including, so what we did is even, so if we did not decrease these items on here, we would have about another three-hundred-thousand dollars worth of reductions needed to our in-house staff. So we looked very closely at our services that we, that we receive from, from Questar mostly and from outside services. So before anything, we, we decided that we were going to take a look and reduce some of those services. And some of these are administrative costs that the district has utilized. We'll be using our current administration and current in-house staff to provide some of these. So right now, we have a one-point-oh network engineer from Bosse's that is in district. It was a full-time person. We're reducing that to a point-six, which is a twenty-five-thousand-dollar savings. We also have relied pretty heavily on Bosse's curriculum coaching. We're going to reduce that. It's, we, we have, we have a large group of, of in-house or outside staff that come and help us. We're reducing that to point-five. So it's a very large reduction of fifty-two-thousand-five-hundred. We're also reducing our Bosse's analysts. Right now, we have one and, and a piece of one. We're reducing that by twenty-three-thousand dollars. So we'll have less data analysis. Some of our curriculum tools that we've used, we've, we've done, we've done some analysis of them. Approximately twenty-thousand dollars of it, we're reducing based on usage. So that's a twenty-thousand-dollar difference as well that we're reducing. Scroll down. And then same, we have some support for Bosse's on health and safety. We have someone in district one day a week. We're no longer going to be having that, any, that service anymore, reducing that. So that's a savings of fifteen-thousand dollars. As we talked about earlier, we already consolidated two bus runs, which is an approximate seventy-thousand-dollar savings. All supply codes are going to be reduced by five percent, which is a thirty-thousand-dollar savings. And so what we'll do is we'll, we'll talk to all of the principals what that means, how we divide that. And then for field trips, we're reducing a ten-thousand dollars in the budget. There will still be plenty of field trips had, but there might be some less. And every principal will be overseeing how they're going to utilize the money that they do have in field trips. So it's not nearly a full reduction in field trips. It's just a reduction because we wanted to make sure that we, you know, also touched upon extracurricular as well without getting rid of it all. So it's going to be a five percent reduction in what we usually spend for supplies of the three, of all the, of district. Yeah. Okay. So the district contracts with Bosse's to have someone on staff to review safety plans, to review health plans, kind of as a consultant. They, they are here weekly, they're here weekly. Now they're going to be here as needed. So the, the district has adopted both. They use both. Well, not necessarily. Needham, Needham is
In-depth studies.
Needham is, is, Needham is on needed, so we pay as needed for them. So they're kind of like on per diem. So it's not like we spend, you know, they're not here and we're not paying them monthly. We just pay them as we need them. So I, I would say continue that. But the, but the district also uses health and safety through Questar to do like water testing to do. But a reduction makes sense to not have someone here weekly. It would just be as needed.
Mike, are all those numbers net after coserve?
No, so we will be having a decrease the following year on revenue. But as I said, our Bosse's went from fifty percent to thirty-six, so it won't be as big a decrease as years past.
So I just wanted to make sure people understand that all of those items that I just talked about outside of our teaching staff has already been taken out of the budget. We would have a larger deficit if we didn't take those out. But the other positions are based upon staffing. So if you can go to the next, go back to the slide and the last page on the slideshow. So all of what we talked about is how we balance the budget, right? So we talked about five-hundred-ninety-six-thousand-eight-hundred-and-eighty-four dollars of reductions from the budget. Then what we're recommending to you now is that we take four-hundred-and-eight-thousand-five-hundred-and-eighty-six-thousand dollars out of fund balance. That is the most the district has ever utilized, I believe, in a long time.
There's another hundred thousand there.
So that is before the ninety-one-thousand-four-hundred-and-thirty-nine, because don't forget, that's always a hole. So the total in yellow that we'll take out of fund balance is five-hundred-thousand-twenty-five dollars.
We have the insurance.
I have a hundred thousand more to go, so it'll be six-hundred thousand.
Yeah, so based upon the decisions today and the health insurance going up, we'll update that next week for you. It'll be six-hundred thousand dollars out of fund balance. Now, just to remind everyone, that means we have to have at least six-hundred thousand dollars next year out of fund balance and on top of any other deficit. But like I've repeated a million times, we're very fortunate where we have enough money where we can plan to take out at least that much for several years to come. So rather than, you know, the only other option, if you don't want to use fund balance, would be to reduce more, right? Or the only, if you don't want to reduce, the only other option is take more fund balance out, which would just be digging us a bigger hole. You know, this is, so the history behind in Chatham, last year, we took ninety-one thousand dollars out. And years before that, Mike, was it ever, I don't know the history.
I think the highest we'd been about ninety thousand. So then we got that down to zero. So last year, we started the process. Like I said, the, the biggest thing to realize is once you start this, next year, obviously, revenue is not coming from the state. We're at the minimum. You know, we get the minimum, enrollment, even if enrollment, it's never going to catch up where it needs to be for the formula. So that, those are the, you know, those are the factors that are, that are impacting us. There's one other big factor is interest income. So interest rates were high last year. And they're starting to come down. So I'm not going to change that a lot in our budget. I didn't raise it all the way to the high point. But for example, we're earning five percent. That gave us, I assure you, almost a million dollars. Now, we're earning four percent. They're talking about, obviously, there's two rate cuts. So as the rate cuts come, our interest rate drops. But four or five years ago, we only earned a hundred thousand because interest was point-two-five percent, zero-point-two-five. So that's a big swing. That's another big factor we're going to be looking at going forward the next few years. But that's not for next year.
So we're not asking the board to make a decision on this today, but this is our recommendation as a, as, as, you know, as the district to, to reduce five-hundred-ninety-six-thousand-eight-hundred-and-eighty-four based on what I just shared with you. And then to take, it's going to be five-hundred-thousand-twenty-five plus everything we talked about today with preschool. The, the, the plan will be is we'll have a final presentation on the eighth. And then there, you're, we're going to ask you to adopt a budget from there. Anything else, Mike?
I just want to say one thing. The, I know you're reassuring everyone with the, the availability of reserves, but I, we look at that waterfall chart a couple of times a year, Mike. It wasn't included today, right? The reserve waterfall. We, we gotta, it will erode all of our reserves if we don't do something every year to shrink that to nothing. We need to do that in a few years. We can't, we can't do this and
And I said when we started, since we have the reserves, we have a three-to-five-year process, you know, we don't have to do anything immediately. I'm not trying to impact major impacts to education yet. But you're right, because ultimately, what's going to happen is we'll use some more reserves, and we can only do that so long because both, both of us have been on the other side of it. When you run out, you're, you're talking massive cuts to, to program and massive tax hikes. But in a few years, we're also going to have to start looking at the tax, tax levy.
So that's concluded. So we'll get our academic update, Terry?
Good evening, everyone. My update is very short. I was going to put a joke in here about how long it was, but I figured it, I didn't know if I'd get any laughs, so I won't do that. It really is brief. So two weeks ago, I shared with you that regional PD day was coming soon, and it was that Friday. Big success. I've, I've had lots of positive feedback from many different folks who participated. Want to thank again our Chatham presenters, who I shared with you last time. They did an amazing job. The keynote that morning was really good. It's always interesting when it's, you know, virtual like that. But it was good. It was a really good day. Over three thousand people regionally were involved. So it's going to be a part of that. So a good day. April twenty-third is an early release day. That's our next professional development event. The PD committee is busy putting together a really great agenda. It's not finalized yet, but we're looking at options. Just some examples in restorative practices, disciplinary literacy, K-eight math modules, magic school, AI training. The Capital District, Auburn, doing some work on building relationships with English language learners. Bard College is going to offer training for our ELA folks, some wellness opportunities. So we have a pretty robust agenda. There's a little foreshadowing for everyone for what really is even just about two hours of PD. So it's really great. Really happy with the direction we're heading in there. And then I just want to share that on March thirty-first, a group of administrators, teachers, we will be attending a regional iReady user group to learn more about iReady data and how to use that to make instructional decisions. It'll give us a chance to dive into our data a little more, but also work with some other school districts in the region and hear how they're doing it and how they're utilizing it. So continuous learning and improvement there. And I too just wanted to say, Muriel, thank you. And I will miss you. And I will also say that, now, this is a little known fact, but Muriel and I are birthday buddies. We share a birthday, and it's this weekend. So happy birthday. I'll be the person to say. Yes, yes. Well, and of course, yes, Debbie and I are also birthday buddies. So we're going to have a really good time this weekend. Any questions from anyone? Thank you.
Thank you, Terry. Okay, finance committee, do you have anything to add to? Okay, I'm glad to hear that, actually. Okay. Wellness committee. Andrew, back to you.
Aren't I done yet?
No.
Okay, all right. Wellness committee. I'll have, I'll have Terry and Linda help. Today, we had a wellness committee. My, my brain is, I don't even know if I can speak anymore. But we had Tara from, where was she from, Linda? Thank you. Twin County's Recovery. She even spoke to our wellness team today to, to have a discussion about their services that they're providing for the district. So I thought it was really important for her to come to talk about the services. We're going to be planning a, a family or a parent night that parents can come and learn about the services. They're also, she's also going to be bringing a mock bedroom that's going to have some of the unfortunate latest tools that students and kids around the country are using. Vapes, and she talked about one, it's on a watch. There's actually a vape on a watch. So she's trying to educate families that, what to look for in their, in their classroom. So she'll be doing that work, and then she'll also be doing, talking about the services that she can offer for families and students here in Chatham based on that service. So that was a great presentation for everyone. And then we talked in our subcommittees, both subcommittees are working on surveys. And we're going to be getting those surveys out within the week. We're going to be doing a student survey and a faculty and staff survey. And from there, we're going to be using NADA to plan our future. We're going to try to make some plans this year for next year and go from there. Terry or Linda, want to share anything else from your subcommittee?
Just to say that while we are planning for our students and their wellness, we also are trying very hard to plan for staff because we know it's an issue for everyone. And right now, we're hampered a bit because a couple of the things we looked at cost more money than we could do. But we are going to get that survey to you. It's being planned by this community. There are staff members representing you there. And it won't take a long time to do. We've been told, you know, not to give you something that's going to take a long time, but a ten-minute survey just so we know better what the kinds of things that you might like or need. And if we can find the resources to do them. And there are some resources that we can look into. So that's coming. Please take the time to do it.
Thank you, Linda. Thank you, Andrew. Okay, so the ordinary stuff here. Old Business, second policy reading. Policy two-two-two-zero, the nomination and election and duties of board officers, the second reading. Am I on? Okay, so the only update from the first reading that we had for this is, honestly, back in twenty-eighteen, I was struggling with a sentence. But the intent was that as long as you've served one full year on the board, at some point, you are eligible to be an officer. What we wanted to do is preclude anyone who had never been on a board before from just walking on and seeing officer. So I wrote a really clunky sentence some years ago, and Linda pointed it out to me. And this one is much better. And this one is much better. And I think actually is more concise and captures the original ten intent of what the sentence meant. And it is to be eligible to hold the position of a board officer. The board member must have served one full year during either their current or a past term on the board. So everyone good.
Not necessarily in your right mind.
I'm back. Yeah, so that was the only edit that was made from the first reading. Is everybody good with that version now?
I, I'm fine with that edit. This is a funny, so this, this may seem like an obscure edit, but during my time on the board, eight years, we've looked at this thing, I want to say five times. It's actually been a bit of a problem sometimes. I'm not sure if there's another side of it, if it actually protected us from anything. I can imagine some scenarios where it would be really actually dangerous for there to be too much disruption without people knowing what's going on, if there's a lot of board turnover. Or disruptive. But we've, we've actually had to, to make some interesting choices over time because of this. So I, I
Of having the one-year experience.
I, I, I guess my, my curiosity is, when did this get added? Was it always there?
I want to say this was, let me think. So I came on in twenty-seventeen.
Was it already there?
I don't think it was. I think it was April of twenty-eighteen that this was a, yeah, that originally updated. And it was updated after a very exciting board meeting.
Well, I, I can see what it's trying to accomplish. And Muriel, just like, you have the longitude of experience here with board turnover. And I'm wondering if a half a year might be as effective because we've had, I, I don't know. I, what do you think?
I don't think a half a year is anywhere, a half a year to serve before you can be an officer. Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, yeah.
Absolutely not.
Okay.
No.
I would have to agree with that. There is so much to it. It really
Years and years ago, somebody come on the board, a new person, they expected to be an officer immediately. And when they, and when they found out they couldn't be, they, they resigned. So I think you absolutely have to at least see your, to show your, to show that you're invested in the school system.
Well, I think invested, but also understanding of all the, sorry, all the, all the nuances of being a board member and being a leader on that board.
So let, let me ask about the other side of that spectrum then. Rachel, you just left the board for a number of years. Not that you didn't pay attention at all, but basically you got dropped in the middle of a bunch of stuff, right? That's the other side, right? Where someone could be on, they might have had relevant board experience ten, fifteen years ago, but then we're in the middle of, we just went through superintendent. but then we're in the middle of, we just went through superintendent hunt, big, long, complicated process. There's other things like that, right? Well... Right, but if they were here 10 years ago and they get voted in, and then they're immediately officer in the middle of a process that... I'm a little actually worried about that.
Is there a provision where we could, if you had a situation where you wanted to break this, you could have a board vote for that, wouldn't you?
It would be... We could, we could, but I don't think it's good, I don't think it's a good process or policy. Like, I don't think it's good. Our board process should not be to amend or waive policies because we feel like it.
I don't see it'll happen very often. I really...
You're on the board for a year. You know, whether it was 10 years ago or whether it's not, you know what you're getting yourself into and the level of leadership that is going to be needed, whatever the circumstances are, of how to adjust to that. And I think putting someone in who has no experience to that would be very different. You know, it's much kind of like, you know, Andrew came in with years of experience as a superintendent into a completely new situation, but he'd already been a superintendent. It wasn't like we went and hired someone with no experience who's never been in such a C-suite level leadership position before to just be like, here you go. But he knew what he was getting into, even if it was a different dynamic over at Lebanon. Or you at least had fair warning.
That's a compelling argument. Well, theoretically, the board's voting them in, but in practice, it doesn't actually typically work that way and usually come to consensus. And it's sort of a, we all have to sit together and we have to be willing to work with each other for the next year. And the decision is not, it's not...
Just so you know, there was a vote in which I beat Mrs. Paxton. You know, it's a split four to five decision.
But it doesn't usually go that way.
And I rocked as vice president.
Yeah, it's difficult to have situations where there's contention in the board, so it's easier to just not have that situation to begin with.
But I wasn't a newbie. I had served a full year.
There's been very little contention. We usually, most of the boards that I've worked with, and we can talk, we talk things out. We talk things out, and, you know...
I think it's like the hiring experience. When you have a certain level of job, you say, you know, I'd like you to have a BA and an MBA and X number of years of experience for this level of job. And I think we're just saying one year at a moment in time in your life, you served on a board.
Yeah.
I think it's fair.
Okay, I feel good about it.
So read it once more.
It says, "To be eligible to hold the position of a board officer, the board member must have served one full year during either their current or a past term on the board." So a person could serve in their second year of being a board member, or they could come back to the board after 10 years and serve as a board member, or a board officer.
Let's see. Sorry, I get so involved in that conversation. Okay. So can I have a motion to adopt policy R63? Be it resolved that the Board of Education adopt policy 2220, nomination, election, duties of board officers.
Second.
All in favor? Any opposed? Okay, the fun stuff. All right. Motion, R64. Be it resolved that the Board of Education of the Chatham Central School District hereby accepts the recommendation of the superintendent to appoint Stephanie Carbone to a four-year probationary employment as the Director of Student Support Services in the tenure area of Director of Student Support Services commencing May 1, 2025 and ending April 30, 2029. Be it further resolved that the Board of Education approves the terms and conditions of employment dated March 17, 2025, authorizes the superintendent to sign the agreement, and approves the benefits and payment of money contained therein. Can I have a motion? All in favor? Anybody have any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. Welcome. Okay, R65. Be it resolved that the Board of Education accept the donation of a check in the amount of $2,750 from the Gene Haas Foundation. This donation will be for the Artemis Robotics Team to cover costs incurred for competition. Did I pronounce that correctly? H-A-S. Can I have a motion?
Second.
Does anyone have any questions?
Comment.
Comment, please.
Building these robots is stupidly expensive, and we have to throw out most of the parts every year. So I am super thankful for this and the transportation to the competition, of course, et cetera. I think that over the years, it's been really interesting to see the types of children that orient around this event. It's not always the children that people think of as being, you know, geeky robotics science nerdy types. And I think it's just really great that we have this program, and it'd be neat if we could find ways to grow it.
Thank you. So all in favor? Any opposed? So moved. Number three. R66. Be it resolved the Board of Education designate the list of withdrawn equipment as presented by Sean Caldwell, high school technology teacher, to be eligible for disposal in accordance with board policy. Can I have a motion? Does anyone have any questions? All in favor? Any opposed? So moved. Okay, R67. Be it resolved the Board of Education accept the consensus agenda L through N as written. Can I have a motion? Does anyone have any questions about these? All in favor? Any opposed? So moved. We are on future agenda items. I did have a note here for...
Matt's cafeteria study, if we need to have alternatives.
Okay.
Right, is that?
I don't know if we need the study yet, although maybe some data coming to the meeting would be nice. But I really just want to talk through the impact and...
Potential impact.
Yeah, we probably have like several years of discussion about cafeteria that have happened in many meetings that should, the current board should be caught up on.
Yeah.
We can give a couple scenarios of what the cost implication would be. You know, if they went back to the 60% versus...
Okay, and maybe in policy, we should just have a discussion on what our current policy says.
I just revamped it last year because of the change in USDA, so that's okay.
We'll take care of it.
I wanted to bring up, we need to do an annual review of our code of conduct. So we need to be prepared to take a look at that. I would love to get some feedback from our administrators and whatever feedback from the school itself to just make it more Chatham-specific. And it's prescribed that we have to look at it every year, so years winding down, we need to get that on the...
We did a major, I know that maybe we, did we miss, we skipped a beat this year? Is that what happened?
Last year, we missed it, but it is an annual requirement.
Yeah, so I remember every year before that going through it. There was a major update a few years ago. It was actually a complete restructure. It'd be great to get some feedback from maybe even the classroom level. I'm not sure how much of that translated down to actual change in practice, but I know that there's things like hats, dress code expectations that I think are continuing conversation we should be having at this level.
Maybe we can get feedback. Have those surveys already gone out in Wellness? Maybe we can craft something, get some feedback, and then do we normally look at in policy?
They're going out Thursday, though.
Oh, I'm still awake.
We can do it formally, maybe...
And we, and one thing that I will do, because as case law changes, so we had to, we should have, we're going to have our attorney look at it first.
Okay.
To see, to make sure it's following all the new regulations.
Right, right, but I would love to get at like a building level, like, you know, just random comments.
And some districts do have code of conduct by building, you know, that's another, right? I believe it's only the district, so we just have to make sure that all the handbooks align to the district code of conduct if we're going to continue the district model, which you can, you know, done different, different places.
Do we typically get any feedback from students?
So there's a lot of, so every, the way it should work is every building should have a committee to review it and take a look at it based upon, you know, the needs of the building. And then from there, then bring it to the board for discussion from there, and then there could be edits back and forth from there. So it really, you know, I just want to make sure that the attorney takes a look at it, then every building takes a look at it because the district meeting, the administrators and the teachers are the ones that are maintaining and making sure that it's followed. And then from there, then you can take a look at it and make any other updates. But I would definitely start at the building attorney level, building level, and then bring it down to you guys.
I don't want to add to anybody's burdens to the last portions of the year. We know how crazy this year is, but if there's any compelling changes, that's the time to bring those up.
Yeah.
The big thing, and I still have, I don't have a specific concern about a specific classroom, but there are some concepts in, you know, K-12 code of conduct around things like hats and hoods, and around things like scarves, around distractive clothing language or... And whether we make changes to the code of conduct at the district level or not, it's actually really important that we come to grips with the fact that those norms have changed and they need to change, and case law says they need to change.
And that's why the attorney, the attorney piece is huge because there's been so many cases on dress code that have changed.
And I'm not actually sure at the classroom level that that change that happened at the district level because of case law has actually translated into practice everywhere, but that should probably be part of our conversation.
Yeah.
And who knows what's going to happen with the cell phone problem with the governor? So that's still up in the air here.
Yeah, we, right now, it's, so speaking of that, it's a very hot topic out there. It's one of the governor's number one priorities, and she's saying she's tying aid to it. So if, because right now, the Assembly and the House, they want to update it and give more freedom to the districts to make decisions, but the governor wants it to stand as is, and that's her, she's really sticking to that. So that, very controversial at the Capitol right now.
From what I've been reading, it looks like we, we're one step ahead.
No, it's much more onerous, I believe, than what we've done.
So we, so according to the new regulation right now, kids cannot have it on them, can't be in their pocket, can't be in their backpack, has to be put in a, it has to be put somewhere outside of their body. So could it be a locker? Do we have to buy devices? Right now, we're...
The state will buy all those.
Yeah, so it's controversial.
We'll see.
So that should be coming out. It's going to be tied to the budget. Hopefully, we'll have, we'll have that out within the next month or so.
Let's hope that that's the way. Okay, that's all I had for future agenda. Anybody else? Okay, so we're going to open it up to the second public comment. Does anyone want to speak?
The highest, the highest we had was 50. We're at 28 now, but if you're looking for the highest number, we have 50 at one point. I've been checking it all time.
So we do have an executive session. We're going to go into executive session for collective negotiations. And I have a motion to appoint Andrew Court as District Pro Tem. Motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No, I didn't. I'm sorry. I realized that as my mouth is still moving, I realized I missed that. Okay, so I need a motion to enter executive session.
Motion.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We do not anticipate returning to open session.